I'd like to welcome everyone to the Hybrid Planning Board meeting. It's our first hybrid meeting, so bear with us if there's technical difficulties. Right now, I'd like to take a call to order by doing a roll call. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delicio?
Here.
Ms. Foley?
Yeah.
Ms. Gilbert is not here. Mr. Olney?
I'm here.
And Ms. Hennig is not with us.
Are we expecting her?
I was not here, she wasn't coming.
Okay.
So it looks like we have a quorum tonight. I'd like to remind all board members and guests to be recognized by the chair. If you wish to speak, this meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is, I mean, just acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence. We have an email letter from 814. Don't know of any others.
We have Gail here.
Gail's on.
Okay.
At this time, I allow any public comments for items not on the agenda with a limited time. Does anybody from the public would like to speak? Okay, first item is the curb cut at 5A Arbella Street. I wasn't here last meeting, but I understand there was a sidewalk and the board asked for a complete application. That was received. And are there any comments from the board on the curb cut?
I don't know.
Go ahead, Sarah.
So I, um, we, it came up a little bit just in conversation at our workshop and I went back and Christina had asked about whether or not it was taking parking spaces for school kids and I noted, so I went back and I looked and whether it was too close to the intersection. And it's quite a ways from the intersection. I didn't measure it, but it's several houses, maybe three or four houses from the intersection. And the parking is, parking is posted there. No parking 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. And so it looks to me like it has been posted to dissuade school parking. Whether that works or not is, of course, I'm not there at that time. So those two issues I thought were valid issues, but I at least satisfied myself. And we had not talked about those previously. And I satisfied myself that I was comfortable with that. That said, I do also agree that it's a bit of a subverting of the special permit for the, for the ADU process that, or whatever happened there to get that. Because it was not shown, the construction hasn't changed, but the access has changed and it could have easily been anticipated. So I don't think we can do anything about it now, but I think in the future, it would be hubus if we feel strongly that, that the single driveway is the single driveway for the two units, that we note that in an approval. So I think it's okay and I will vote for it. But I had those thoughts and I did go back and look.
Thank you.
So my-
Christina?
Initial, I mean, the application is here again. It's not checked off that it's in the water resource overlay district. So after two meetings, I don't understand why that's still not, to me, it's not complete. And I feel like this is subverting the process. If they went in front of the ZBA and said they had sufficient parking and the conversation was that there is enough parking, why are they coming now? So I feel like if they don't have enough parking, that initial permit should go back because something is being avoided. There is an oversight that's not being, we're saying that we don't have any jurisdiction. We just have jurisdiction on the curb. So then give it back to the people that do have jurisdiction, who gave the special permit. Or we do have jurisdiction. I think we've already said, we don't want people doing this going forward. So what are we doing to stop it? We say we have the special permit process and we have controls over it. So are we okay with every addition, every ADU that comes in front of us getting a second curb cut? We haven't turned one down. And what is the criteria that we would turn one down? I am concerned. We're saying no, never. So I'm not convinced. I think this is a big ask. And if they had this ask, it should have been at the ZBA, not at our level. And the water-
This is, this is not, excuse me, Ron, may I point something out?
Excuse me?
This is not an ADU, it's a two-family home.
Regardless of what it is-
Who's speaking?
Well.
Is it Sue?
I have no idea.
No, it's Sue Brown, maybe?
Oh, is that you, Sue?
Was it Gail?
No, this is without Gail speaking.
It was Gail.
Regardless of what, even then, if it's a two-family, then the plans that went in front of the ZBA did not indicate this. So I don't know.
I think we're limited to the curb cut rules for us, you know, safety and drainage. I don't know about this, what you're saying, we have purview.
Would the ZBA's decision been any different?
I don't know.
Was the ZBA contacted?
I don't know. Sue, do you have any more information on this? Sue Brown?
I don't know what you're asking for information on. Can you be more specific?
So I think the, the application that the ZBA approved with the special permit is different than what the application is in front of us because a driveway has been added after approval. So was the ZBA, did this go back to the ZBA for review?
It doesn't go back to the ZBA. The ZBA is not in charge of curb cuts. They permitted a two-family building. That was their purview. And they permitted the two-family building.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I'm not addressing the curb cut, I'm addressing the driveway. It's my understanding that the ZBA permitted this based on enough sufficient parking for the two-family. They didn't need additional parking. So I'm not sure what's changed. We're taking away an on-street parking.
Hi, Ron Athanas here. What seems to be the problem? We went before your board, a planning board. We did everything to the letter, okay? And then the zoning board have appealed everything to the letter. What's the problem there? It's a two-family house. Where do you expect us to park the vehicles? And that cut park was approved. Okay, it's in the plans.
Okay, could you just identify yourself for the record?
No, I said, Ron Athanas here.
And address?
Address 500 Dollar Street, Manchester.
Yeah, I think our purview was just for these-
I mean, I did everything possible that I could possibly. We went every single letter to the law on both those permits. What do you want from us?
So to me, the parking was not in the initial plan. And the ZBA said that the-
Yes, it was, ma'am.
Excuse me?
Hold on, Mr. Athanas.
We'll look at the plan. It was right in that parking area.
I've actually asked for the plan that the ZBA approved. It hasn't been forthcoming to me. I've seen the plan that was for the driveway. What I've asked for is what the ZBA approved the two-family for and that plan included sufficient parking for the two-family. So if you have a problem with your parking now, that wasn't what the ZBA agreed to.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Yes.
Ron.
Yeah?
Ron, this is Sue.
Sue?
That plan has been in SharePoint for over a week.
I can put it up. The ZBA one?
Thank you.
For over a week.
Yeah. Hold on, we're trying to get the plan up on screen.
I just want an up and down vote on this.
Understood, Mr. Athanas. Understood. We're just working through it.
Thank you, sir.
We're just working through it. Give us a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Come on. Oh, here we go.
I need you.
Oh, can you just enable me? Sorry. Okay. So I believe this is the plan for, sorry, 2020. This is in SharePoint, August 19th, 2020. So this is the site plan and it shows the infiltration details.
Yeah, true.
And the infiltr, I believe, the infiltration. Ron, I see right here the, can you come this way?
I think we approved these.
That's correct.
So this is the question, this is where the new, can you see where my cursor is? I believe this is where the new curb cut is and the new gravel. So this tree here and this tree here have been removed, I believe.
That's correct.
So Christina is correct that the plan of at least August 19, 2020 does not show the, the proposed second curb cut. It does, however, show the infiltration as well as the water, the pervious surface, I believe is calculated on this. And this was part of the pipeline.
So was there an updated plan last meeting? I was not.
Yeah, I have to unshare.
Is there an updated plan, Sue?
Yeah. Sorry.
Yes, there is an updated plan.
Yeah, I can find it.
While we're waiting, Ms. Jakes, you have a comment?
I do have a question. Thank Becky Jakes, 22 Forster Road. And I see that that was a fairly large tree. Has the tree been removed and was there a tree hearing on that tree if it had been removed?
We're not aware of that. Planning Board's not aware of it.
Good question. So this is the-
Thank you.
This is the proposed curb cut. And this is, this gravel here is in place already. But the sidewalk curb cut has not been completed.
What's the date on this plan?
This is one we looked at the other day. This is August 19th, 2022.
Christina, is this satisfying your comments?
So I would, I would share Christine's concerns about the process. I guess looking at what we have, I would like to know if the proper procedures to Becky's point were done for the tree. And since there's already a curb cut there, I would like to see this curb cut be smaller. It's a very small side street and having two relatively large curb cuts is a lot for one lot. I don't have the exact dimensions on me, what the width is there. I can't see it.
18 feet is, I believe it's noted right here.
You know, maybe that could get down to 12 or something. But could you, could you walk us through the tree removal that was done prior to applying for a curb cut to the applicant?
Mr. Athanas, do you have any comment on the tree removal?
Yes. Yeah.
The tree was removed before we put in the addition.
No. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ron Athanas, the tree was a diseased tree and it was removed way before we put in for the addition on the two-family. Okay? And we can reduce that cut to 12 feet. That's fine with us.
Okay. Mr. Jam, do you have a comment on the?
Just a couple of things. The tree was removed long before this curb cut application. I know it's shown on the plan. I'm not 100% sure. I assume that we removed it, but it was gone long ago before, if this is part of Becky's question, before the current tree policy. But it would have, if we removed it, it definitely had a hearing or at least Tom Henderson viewed it to confirm that it was diseased. But I can check the records on that and follow up with you, Becky, directly or the board if they want. And then the only other thing that I'll just say about the proposed width, you know, we, I have talked to Ron quite a while about this. That's why he came back before the board. He actually came to DPW first to discuss the curb cut, the second curb cut. And one of the considerations here for, at least for the town perspective and DPW perspective is the sidewalk and the condition of the sidewalk for the roadway. And that was something that I discussed with other board members at the site meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I just want to say that that has also been a part of this process.
Okay, and there really is no curb there, correct? It's just kind of a-
Yes, that's correct.
It's a sidewalk, walking street to the school.
It is, okay. Okay, Sarah Melish, do you have a comment on this?
Yes, when this came before the ZBA, we were very concerned about the parking situation and the lack of green space. And if this had come before us, we would not have approved that second parking. There's no green space left on this lot.
Yes, there is. It's 53%.
Okay, let's not have any back and forth. Any other comments on the curb cut?
Okay, I apologize for that.
Yes, we're just-
I have one more comment.
Any other comments from anyone else? Go ahead, Mary.
A concern I would have is reducing the width is where are the cars going to be able to turn around? This is a walking route to school. And if you've got this additional curb cut backing out onto the street, that's safety concern. So I would like to see how the car could turn around and I don't see it.
Now, is that a bylaw? I mean, I mean, every driveway in Manchester, do the cars have to turn around in?
We prefer it.
That's a question.
It is in the bylaws, yes. It is in the bylaws.
It is, so-
It is not.
I believe that they wanted a wide turnaround on new construction. I don't know if yours is new construction, though.
Absolutely is. Which is my concern, right? So this went in front of the ZBA. It was new construction. They approved a plan. This is not what they approved.
Yes, it was. You know, there's, there's driveways on this street-
Understood.
-that cars can't turn around.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I mean, this is the general conversation that we've been having about ADUs and extra parking and parking spots and what the unintended consequences are and when will we say no? You know, the other one that was maybe on Herald Street, not as congested. I can see maybe saying yes, but this is a concern where more ADUs and more two-families in this district are going to go. I mean, we're not going to have any streets left. We're not going to have any curb left. I mean, unfortunately, as much as people say we don't have cars, here we go. We do.
Chuck, you see any safety concern with this driveway as designed?
Well, certainly backing out is not ideal. However, one of the considerations that, you know, was also an improved condition is once we, and you know, I've talked to Ron, he's okay with waiting until the spring when this work is scheduled for the actual curb cut to be in place. But by virtue of moving the sidewalk out, which is what we're going to have to do to mask the sidewalk ahead, you know, there'll be more distance between the car parked and, you know, people coming up. I will say the sidewalk is also on the, you know, there's no parked cars in front of or blocking the pedestrians from the, you know, where he's trying to turn in and out. So, you know, it's not ideal, but it's also not the worst thing that's ever happened. Or, you know, certainly there's other places in Manchester on busy streets in the school zone that, you know, have pull-in, pull-out. So it's kind of, it's not, it's not unique in that.
Ron?
And this is, and this is a one-way street, I might add.
Understood.
May I ask a question? Yeah. A question to Sarah, because I, Sarah Melish, I'm trying to understand this, what feels like a mismatch in terms of what the ZBA reviewed and the expectations or what was presented at that time for parking arrangements, knowing that this was going to be a two-family and what is coming now? Because it does seem like there's a kind of disjoint that's happening in the process when we're seeing things that are effectively after the fact. As far as the backing out, just before I ask Sarah, as far as the backing out, you know, our traditional development pattern has houses on small lots that were not designed around cars. And so I think that the backing out is, while, while reducing the number of curb cuts is important for safety, I think that backing out is sort of part and parcel with our development patterns and comes, the expense of not backing out is creating more, you know, converting more open space or green space to parking area, impervious or not. But Sarah Melish, could you please say more about what the application presented at that time and what the ZBA approved? Because that might help me understand what was supposed to be permitted for this. I don't think we have the plan that shows what the ZBA approved.
Right, so that area where they're now proposing the new parking was all landscaping. And that was basically the only landscaping on the lot. And we looked at the driveway going down to the new garage and had concerns, had concerns about coverage, had concerns about drainage. If, if the second driveway is put in gravel, I assume that's pervious gravel, you still have no green space. It's all, all structure and driveways.
Ma'am, there's green space.
Mr. Athanas? Please be recognized by the board. Mr. Athanas?
Yes.
Please be recognized by the board if you wish to speak. You can't have any back and forth. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I don't think we're seeing that plan, though. I mean, we're seeing a site plan that shows the drainage improvements. We're not showing, seeing a plan that shows, unless that's it. Is this what you were saying, Sarah?
That's it.
No, no, the ZBA was approved before that drainage piece.
Okay. You did not approve them.
She didn't approve the impervious. It came in front of us.
Oh, okay. So the planning board reviews this?
We approve.
We approved that prior to a driveway. And so I just have one question and maybe someone else. Ron, you can answer this one. So the drainage on the driveway, is that okay? The car's going to be on top of it and parking and-
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue. Chuck? I think it's capable for H20 loading, as it says.
Yeah, I can't imagine it will be an issue for a one car.
Sarah?
It's a question for Sue Brown. In terms of the Complete Streets, the Safe Streets study, was Arbella Street included in that? And is there recommendations for Arbella, given that it's, you know, 100, 100 yards from the entrance to the school? Any specific Arbella Street recommendations?
Thanks, Sarah. Arbella Street was not part of the Complete Streets report and I was not part of the Safe Routes to School study. So I'm sorry, I can't answer your question. And I don't know if Nate or if Chuck was involved in the Complete Streets.
Is that on the web?
Like you said, this is Chuck. The Complete Streets didn't address anything on Arbella Street. The Safe Routes to School, I wasn't a part of that project either. However, it does seem to me that the Safe Routes to School, like, was somewhat completed up above this, like going towards the cemetery? Because that's where they had, they do have ADA handicap ramps and concrete panels, sidewalk. But I, for whatever reason, they stopped there, I think because they had utility conflicts to continue that. So I'm not sure what the next steps were supposed to be for that.
The Safe Routes to Schools was not the Pleasant Street Extension work. That was part of the high school project and part of the site plan review that had people, the crosswalk go from the side of the cemetery across there. There's a crosswalk up at the cemetery gate. There's two gates. And that, this crosswalk was moved there to try to get people to not cross at the corner. And the pavement was actually, there was actually sidewalk along the cemetery, along Pleasant Street Extension on both sides. And we removed the sidewalk on the cemetery side. So it wasn't, it was part of the high school project, site plan review, but not Safe Routes to School or whatever that study was.
Yeah, so my understanding is that that got built, though. So I don't understand why they wouldn't have done anything on Arbella Street if there was something to be done from that perspective.
Yeah, it was part of the high school project, anyway. Site plan review.
I think we drifted a little.
I know, I'm understood. I'm saying the Safe Routes to School, like, all of that work got done separately than the high school, like further down towards the elementary and in front of the high school etc. So, and crossing to Vine Street, like, all of those improvements were part of the Safe Routes to School. It was my understanding, but you might not know it.
Okay.
I just have one follow-up to the driveway. Like, like technical part. Like, so I guess you're saying it actually can drain. But the reason that we have this particular bylaw is because it's in the water resource overlay, right? So the original plan had it on grass and now it's on a driveway. And so now cars stalled, everything is now even more exposed into the ground. Am I not reading this into it? Like, I mean, we're not, I mean, we have a major contamination issue feet away. So we're just saying, hey, let's- We did approve it. We didn't approve it on top of a driveway.
So I have, I'd like to make a motion, actually. Try to break through this. I'd like to move that we approve this driveway subject to two conditions. The first is that the actual curb cut be no more than 12 feet wide. And second, that the plan be endorsed by the zoning board of the fields as a change in their approved site plan.
And if they don't?
We're not approving it either.
My recommendation was to have them send it back, so I'm okay with that. I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just, may I? Just to respond to your questions, Christine, about the drainage. From what I read of the site plan, it's common for those water storage chambers to go under paved areas pervious or impervious. And so I, the site plan demonstrates that there's no, I don't believe there's a material difference. They met the requirements for the drainage. Doesn't get away from the open space and the curb cut issue that you're concerned about, but as far as treating the drainage and capturing it.
I don't think it's treating this, though, right?
It's, if typically those chambers are storing it and then potentially filtering it through the soil, if there is capacity in the soil to do that.
If there's no soil, right?
Well, they're still subgrade. So I think the drainage is not the issue here. Because the material, the site plan demonstrates that they've installed these chambers and that they've met the drainage requirements. So I don't think that's the concern. I think the concern is how many curb cuts and, you know, whether the ZBA approved.
So that's a good point. Do we have ascerts that they were installed?
No, but I don't think our, I don't believe that our regulations are requiring ascerts, yet.
I mean, we're supposed, we can check up on them.
We had a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
My only, my only concern with that is we're not addressing the safety issue, which I think backing out on a busy, well-traveled sidewalk with kids and bikes and people dropping off is a concern, but we'll have to weigh that.
Not supposed to drop off.
As I said before, I was inclined to approve this and I, after this discussion, I'm actually not inclined to approve it. I think we're, for all the reasons we've discussed. So I kind of feel like we're abdicating. I like your idea, but I think we're kind of abdicating.
Picking the can?
We're, we're abdicating to the ZBA to do our job, which is to approve curb cuts.
Well, no, I think there is a change in the site plan, ZBA site plan. I think they should weigh in.
Yeah, but we've already given the stamp on our jurisdiction to say, oh, we're fine with the safety, we're fine with the drainage, we're fine with- we're fine with the drainage, we're fine with the pervious surface, so they wouldn't have much left to hang their hat on.
Right.
Well, Sarah said they wouldn't approve this.
Well, that's her opinion, so, okay.
I'm happy to, I think we know where my straw would go, so we could take a straw vote.
So on the motion, do you have the motion?
May I ask a question before the vote? This is Mike Athanas, five Arbella.
Go ahead, Mike.
On the safety, on the safety and concerns about dropping off and pickup on Arbella Street for the schools, they are not allowed to drop and pick up on Arbella Street, they're not supposed to. They do every day, and I know Ms. Creighton was on the board back with the school building, and that was part of the agreement with the town that, at, students were really not supposed to be picked up or dropped off on Arbella Street, and there's signs that state that. No standing parking, no drop-off or pick-off. So for safety reasons, there's really, this is a busy street from seven in the morning till about 7:45 and 2:15 to 2:30.
Okay, thank you. On the motion, any more discussion? Take a roll call vote. Ms. Tenny.
Yeah, I'm, so Sarah, like, kind of had some discussions, so.
No, I think the motion is, if I can state the motion, is to approve it with a 12-foot-wide curb cut subject to remanding it back to the ZBA for approval of the site plan, a modified site plan.
Your concern?
A yes vote means you're approving the driveway based on those two conditions.
Right. My concern is, Mary had a very good point, does the ZBA have any grounds not to deny it?
That's their choice.
So we have a choice now, too, though, so if it is our choice, I think, can I remove my second? Someone else can second, because I think we have to.
It's gonna be voted, so.
Let's just vote it.
Ms. Tenny.
I'm thinking that we should vote it ourselves. I'm reset thinking, mine. I'll vote first, I'm ready to voting no.
Mr., Ms. Foley.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Ms. Tenny.
No.
Ms. Foley?
No, no.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion fails.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that we deny the curb cut for five Arbella Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So would this go back to, if the ZBA did take this up and approved the, the modification to the bylaw, would we approve the curb cut?
I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, modification to the site plan.
I think the process would be more strict, would be in the right order. I, I, I'm not gonna project what we would do, because.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to, I mean, this is two year, within the last two years, this is, this was done, and it seems kind of counter to the intent.
I guess I just want to, it would be nice to give some direction to the applicant as to what they should do with this play.
I think the applicant, I'm not gonna give, I don't think that's our role.
Any further discussion on the motion to deny the curb cut? Okay, Ms. Foley.
So the motion is to deny, yes? Yes.
Yes.
No.
Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
Chair votes no. Curb cuts denied. Ronnie? Okay, moving on to the next subject. Proposed for Board of Health regulations. So Peter, tell me if I got this wrong, but I'll just read a little preamble here. Peter Colaruso, representing the Board of Health, is presenting proposed drinking water regulations. The proposed regulations were placed in your pockets. M E T C sent the Board of Health a sample regulation last fall. The Board of Health, at a meeting a few weeks ago, voted to consider advancing the draft regulations and asked member Peter Colaruso to seek input from various boards and committees, including the planning board, CONCOM, select board, et cetera. This is where the process stands. After gathering input, the Board of Health will further review the proposed regulations and decide whether they wish to proceed with possibly adopting them. If they wish to do so, they will need to hold at least one formal public hearing on the regulations before voting whether to adopt. This process may take many months to complete and probably will include multiple drafts. Peter, did I get that right?
Yes, sure, thank you.
Okay, Peter, you have the floor.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening. I, I'm here to solicit your input and your help in writing this policy. The policy is, the intent of the policy is to protect our drinking water from contamination and/or interruption of flow. I think we all agree that water supply is a zero, zero-sum game, you can't make water, so it behooves us to contain, to keep as much as we can and as good a shape as it is. This regulation will not prevent construction. What this regulation requires or will require is if you are in a situation, if the project is in a situation where it may interrupt the water flow or contaminate the drinking water, that the builder must use the most advanced technology available to avoid these situations. We have been doing this for years on the septic systems. We routinely approve non, for non-conforming systems, the best available technology, rather than obviously not allowing any system at all. So it's pretty standard. I cannot take your comments now, I think it would be inappropriate for me to try to take your comments back to the board members, so I would ask you to send your comments, pro or con, in writing to the Board of Health. Remember, our per, our responsibility here is strictly health, so any comments must relate to the health issue. We don't have any authority for any other situation. Drainage, you mentioned drainage, drainage is, is in the country right now, a big hot topic. As you know, there's a lot of PFAs and all kinds of construction material, because they extend the life of these materials. They routinely wash off of roofs, they wash off opaculants, siding, replacement windows, paints. On the new project, and this only refers to new projects now, over 2,500 square feet, we would ask for a drainage system that collects the runoff and removes it safely from the site. We all know that these contaminants can eventually go through all of the soil and sand and make it into the water source, so that is probably gonna be more expensive, but it's better than contaminating and having to, DPW have to worry about additional treatments or whatever. The bigger issue is totally out of our control, but I think everyone's probably aware of, is the EPA on September 6th announced a notice of federal regulation and rulemaking. And they will be taking comments until October. There's two PFAs that we currently are testing for, I don't know if they are in the mix that we test or not, hopefully they're not. Two of them have been called health hazards since 2016, and this required, this new proposal, which they think will go into effect the end of this year, will classify those two contaminants as hazardous materials, which would require an environmental site assessment report on any construction where there is a potential for PFAs, and if there are PFAs, then there will be no construction there until it's cleaned up. Now that rule may change or may be modified between now and the end of December, but given the potential for PFAs around landfills and around water sources, that could be another huge issue next year, and really make protecting the, the less contaminated water that doesn't have any PFAs in it even more important. So again, I would ask for your input and your contributions to this. The board would then assess how to work it in, your comments, how to work it into the existing standard. If they were not taken verbatim, or if there are any changes, we would come back to you and talk through the modifications of the modifications, if you will. And we want to work with you as a team to strengthen your positions and your decisions. So, I hope I'll gain your support, please contribute, and if there are any questions, I'll take them now.
Yeah, before, before we take questions, I want to talk a little bit about, to the board on process, on how we plan to get comments to you, and I also saw Chuck Dan with his hand up. Did you have a comment, Chuck, on some of the, on the PFAS, or?
Yeah, I was just gonna talk about that, but you can come back to me if it's important, or we can discuss it a different time.
Okay. All right, any questions for Peter from the board? Sarah.
Think, I think that the intent of this is commendable, and we all want to protect our water supply. I'm struggling to figure out the duplicate regulations with zoning. We have, there's stormwater in here, there's earth removal, there's drainage, bedrock disruption, a number of things, and so I'm wondering if Town Council or this has been reviewed to see if it's really, if it's zoning, so just in terms of process. Before we get too far into this, it seems to me that a lot of this is already covered in zoning, maybe, I haven't gone through the details, but also whether or not you, does the Board of Health have jurisdiction to regulate stormwater on development, earth removal, and other related kinds of things? Has that been clearly, or are there other towns doing this?
There are nine, there are nine other towns that are currently doing this, and there's another 11 that are in the process, including our neighbor, Hamilton. The, we only have authority on those sites which would impact drinking water, period, and only to the extent that it impacts drinking water. Now, I gave this presentation to ZBA last week, they had no comments, they were, they were fine with it and had no suggestions and had no problem with overlapping requirements when drinking water is involved.
Well, Peter, are these proposed regulations only for commercial developments?
Any, any structure over 2,500 square feet, new construction, over 2,500 square feet.
Do we have a list of the towns you mentioned that have adopted this?
I don't know if I, I might have it on me, if not, I can certainly send it to you. Wait a minute, Weston, Waylands.
Well, you can send it to us, you don't have to read by, just.
Lexington.
Okay, anybody else from the board?
Just had a suggestion.
And, and the, a copy of this has been sent to the EPA, DEP, and to the town attorney. I have not heard back from the town attorney, so I don't know the status of that. I asked the EPA and the DEP to look at this from a legal perspective and from a technical, is the technology correct? And I asked them to please get back to me no later than September 15th, and if they didn't get back to me, I would assume there was no problems, which may be a mistake with a government agency, but nobody got back to me.
Okay, we, we need to figure out how we're gonna get your comments, but Laura, you have comments?
Yes, Sarah, I have a few, Mr. Colaruso, thank you. I'm trying to figure out how the regulation applies, and you said, on the one hand, over 25, 2,500 square feet, I see in other parts of the regulation, for instance, 5.6 point, two points, sorry, 5.6.2C for any development having 10 or more dwelling units, is regulated in that section, and then 5.7, this regulation shall apply to any and all products for industrial and commercial developments or for any other non-residential development, so I'm, I'm confused reading through it, what it applies to. This seems to be a catch-all for many different types of activities to be regulated, as Sarah mentioned, and, and I'm also wondering, so I'm wondering, one, who does it apply to and when? And, and I see that significant development is defined, but it doesn't seem to match up always with the other mentions. And then for things like stormwater, I am wondering again about the duplicity or redundancy of regulations, and a concern that this may actually not keep up, so that if the, you know, state of Massachusetts is updating its stormwater regulations and our general bylaw refers to those stormwater regulations, but this Board of Health regulations says things that are different, for instance, 5.6.4 drainage, the proposed drainage shall not cause an increase of more than 10% of storm, of the total volume of runoff. We might actually have a tighter, more stringent requirement in our Massachusetts stormwater regulations, so I, I'm wondering how this is gonna be, how this is gonna mesh with those other requirements that may actually move faster than this one.
No, first of all, we would, we, we could clarify, and I would ask you please to send those comments in to make sure that they're transmitted clearly to, to the other board members. The, the intent was to have any structure on a lot over 2,500 square feet, or if you have multiple structures, the total square footage, if the total square footage exceeds 2,500 square feet. So if you have three or four houses of, you know, 1,200 square feet each, then that would exceed it, because it's obviously concerned with the potential flow. As far as updating, we, quite frankly, we have been, we haven't been updating some records on a timely basis. We had, had a part-time, 25, six hours a week employee, and you tend to have to put the fires out first. So things like the private wells, we are looking at to update all of those records and include them in an annual census, if you will. We are now interviewing the last two weeks of a full-time health agent, which would give us the staff and the personnel to update things as they become available, as they become law, if you will. We would certainly want our regulations to be consistent, both with the state and with the planning and zoning. We're not looking to have any less rigorous or more rigorous regulations than either committee is comfortable with.
All right, thanks. Rebecca and Sue, I see everybody hands up, any comments, any other comments from the board, Mary? Mary?
Um I just was gonna comment that um it's already been mentioned, the overlap and that we, if this were to be adopted, that there was a plan in place for things like the earth removal, um blasting, things like that, when when this um is broader than perhaps what's in a bylaw, kind of how that um verification process and oversight process happens.
Well, this would only be applicable on um projects that are initiated after the adoption date. So anything that's already in in the process would be grandfathered, number one. And the excavation a- actually was changed. It was originally three hundred and fifty cubic yards, and then when we double-checked, we realized the bylaw was at two hundred and fifty cubic yards. So we had to go back and reduce um the acceptable uh excavation, which is an example of us trying to be, again, consistent with all the existing and potentially future uh regulations.
No, I have two questions, Mr. Colaruso. The first is, these regulations seem somewhat generic, and I'm wondering who drafted them and for what reason? That's my first question.
Right, I don't know who drafted them. They were um sent to the Board of Health last October from the Means of Excess Conservation um Trust. And I don't know who who was responsible for that. We felt as the board that we had a responsibility to respond, either to accept, reject, or amend. At that time, we voted to table it because we did not believe we had enough technical understanding of what was going on. And then I was uh, I left the room and got voted in to carry the torch, never leave the room. And since then, um we've had Scott Porzeli has reviewed it for for us. He volunteered, we were we were going to hire him as part of the um the review process, and he volunteered to do it for free. We also had what's his name, the attorney, the environmental attorney, um review it. And again, he did it for for free. He volunteered to do it for free. Greg had given us access to uh four thousand dollars if we needed it for an expert to review the proposal, and that's that's where we are. I don't know, I I know that, you know, I was educated as a chemist and as a scientist. Mike Carvelio was the uh the attorney. But I don't know if I could have drafted this by myself, and um the other members of the board are more um medical than they are um biology or chemistry, which is why I think I got elected to uh push this one through or or to bring it to a point where we will understand it and we could get, hopefully, we get consensus from all the boards. We got a a proposal that everyone's comfortable with. There is no regulation now in the Board of Health for clean water whatsoever. So um I would suggest we need something, this may not be it, but we need something. And I got elected, so don't shoot the messenger, please.
I'll lean my way higher. My second, uh I actually have three of these. The second one is, apparently, a sewer connection is gonna be reviewed as well. And there's a reference to a comprehensive wastewater management plan, which I don't think the town actually has, which is why I think this was drafted for something else.
I think we do have that, no, we do have, it's about three hundred pages long, yeah.
Well, in any case, um uh I don't know why someone hooking up to the municipal sewer system would be required to do this. And then my third point is, you know, the amount, the most of the runoff in this town is from existing properties, not new development. And I'm wondering if you're concerned, and that's where most of the pollution is gonna come from, existing properties. Are you considering uh some kind of bylaw change to start regulating drainage and runoff from existing properties, which is what's gonna be producing most of the pollution here?
I that has not been brought up. I will tell you, however, that um we have been taking a a very strong position on existing septic systems. In fact, as an example, uh in nineteen ninety, a couple built a house and um the septic system was undersized and it got approved. They came to us a couple of weeks ago, because they, it's obviously very old and it's not working very well, and it's a non-conforming lot, there's not a lot of space for the um leach field, and there's not enough soil, it's a problematic lot. And they they wanted an upgrade, and we told them that um we can give them a variance for non-conforming lots, but according to state law, it has to be the most advanced technology available at the time, which would be two tanks, so that whatever the effluence that comes out is not drinkable, but it's as close as you're gonna get. And it's pressure pressurized into the limited space, so it gets spread throughout the whole thing. Now, that's much more expensive than they had planned, um but we said, sorry, I mean, we can't, we can't approve something less than that. We we routinely require presby systems, which are much more expensive than your standard system. So we are trying to upgrade all of the septic systems. But we're well aware that the beach closures are due to um pathogens from the human digestive system, which obviously are coming from septic systems. But on the other hand, you know, those are existing systems and and we're trying to to walk a fine line. As far as the tie-ins, um there was a letter uh December seventh, and um it then allowed us off of the released us from the moratorium on septic systems and had referred to this three-hundred-page uh plan. And it said the, and the last paragraph said that the um ultimate decision on who gets to tie in according to this plan is from the Board of Health. Now, there's some question about that, and I've asked the author of that letter for clarification. And again, I have not heard back, um but we'll certainly um comply with, you know, whatever, whatever it is. But that, my understanding is the plan says that those systems along one-twenty-seven up goes Gloucester, tying into the system should get the first shot at any reserve capacity. Then they're talking about allowing some um capacity for expansion of existing homes, people want to enlarge them or or. And then the third was, I believe, was thirty-one thousand um gallons for small commercial use. And and that was over a twenty-year period, would take up all of the excess capacity, the reserve capacity in our sewer system. Now, obviously, if there's more capacity, you know, that changes, if the plan changes, that changes. Nothing is is written in in stone here, and um I anticipate that there will be amendments to anything and going forward as the feds and the state become much more sensitive, both to um potential health over, you know, COVID-type situations or clean water. My understanding is EPA is now going to all the homes on the rivers that order, that go through Boston because of dog waste and fertilizer that's going into the Mystic River and the other rivers and into Boston Harbor, causing all kinds of problems. And they're going to the homeowners directly to try to uh manage that situation. So um I think more rigorous um monitoring of what's going on is gonna be, gonna be in the cards coming down. It can be us, it can be the state, or it can be the feds. I think having a town, various town committees doing it or boards doing it is a much better option than trying to deal with uh either the state or the federal agencies.
All right, um I have three hands up, I wanna go move move a little more quickly on this, probably pick the subject up again. Becky, you have a comment?
Hi, yes, thank you. Becky Jakes, twenty-two Forster Road. I have a couple of questions, and um I've not been able to find this online. Peter, is is this proposed um health regulation online at this point?
There is a version on the town website, but not the latest version. I had a discussion uh with Greg, and I said, you know, we are, this is a work in progress, if you will, and every time there's a draft change, should we post it? Or or should we, you know, wait and then post like the final draft, if you will? And he felt that um if people see the same cover, they're not gonna read through to see where the changes are. So um maybe it'd be best just to wait to post the final version when all of the comments are in and been incorporated.
Can you tell me where it is? Because I've.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I'm just just because I've not been able to find it and I've gone, anyway, okay, that was one question. The, thank you for answering that. Um the other question, and I'm just, um I'm curious in terms of, you know, um some of the other questions people have asked. When you say that that um some of the items are going to be dependent upon size, for example, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred feet, are you talking, is that height of a building, width of a building, i- is, I mean, did those sort of factors? And I I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole here, but I I'm just wondering if if um those types of aspects have been looked into.
Well, the the intent was to um be concerned with the portion that will be underground and and um any potential runoff, so.
Okay, um I'm I'm not going to continue on, I'm I'm just curious, and and that's why I'd love to be able to see the the um the proposed drinking water regulation. And is something that, is the Board of He, Board of Health unanimous in supporting this document?
We are unanimous in having a document, maybe not necessarily this document. I think the feeling is that we need some kind of a clean water policy. This may not be it, but, you know, it's a start, nothing else, and um they're gonna reserve judgment. I think, I don't wanna speak for them, because I don't think that's appropriate. But but I think my sense is that if zoning plan in Hong Kong SB um are all comfortable with it, then they will be too.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and cut you there, because I wanna let others speak. But thank you, Peter, and I'm just asking because, you know, there there are a number of questions in terms of um specific direct implications and potential unintended consequences that I I I think, yes, we need something, but we don't need a bad something, so that's.
Correct, correct.
Thank you very much, Ron, for letting me speak.
Thank you. I'd like to just move through this quickly, we have a lot on our agenda. Sue, Sue Brown?
Thank you, Ron, I'll make this very um quick. Clearly, this is, by its own admission, it's looking at new construction um and new development. But the, but Mr. Colaruso said that the PFAS were found in things like paint and 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 many other construction items, which are used not only in new construction, but in paint jobs of existing um buildings, et cetera. So I just wonder if if we're looking to target PFAS, why we aren't creating a a regulation that bans that substance and such substances rather than looking at um trying to um trying to um what it seems to be like is is trying to stop new construction or to or to create additional regulations around new construction, which feels like land use. So I'm just curious as why we're just not banning the substance where it's known rather than going a different route.
I think, yeah, the the intent is to um, the feeling is you can't do much about existing buildings. They are what they are, they're grandfathered in. But we can minimize any future contamination by trying to use the latest technology in any new construction that would remove all of these potential contaminants. I mean, I um I could have all your hair fall out telling you all the stuff that's in asphalt. We worked twenty years in a research lab, managing a research lab, and we worked with asphalt. And believe me, you don't wanna know all the stuff that is exuded from asphalt, roofing, parking lots, whatever. So the idea is to minimize future contamination. As far as PFAS go, we we, that's gonna be a DPW nightmare. We'll do everything we can to help them and to support them. The feds are eventually going to outlaw more and more and more of these. Unfortunately, the ones, well, the ones that have already are regulated are uses where the companies have already switched and are not not using the PFAs anymore. And they're working their way towards other products, particularly in the construction industry, where the PFAs are used. We don't have the authority, and it would be a total nightmare to try to enforce no PFAs in any paint that's used, any roofing shingles, whatever. It's used in rugs, it's used in um food containers, I mean, it's used everywhere. So I think you're right, if we could control the source, we'd be better off. But I think that's a job where the EPA is gonna kind of call the shots.
All right, thank you. I wanna move quickly uh to Chuck, and then I wanna just talk about a process on how to get comments to you. Chuck?
I'll be quick, Ron, I just, I I've I've read the regulation that Peter has, and um I just think from a practical standpoint, there's no, there's no, nothing in that regulation, I don't even think it mentions PFAS except for in the uh preliminary. So there's no performance standards within it that are gonna do anything for PFAS. And like Peter said, the only treatment for PFAS is gonna be at the water treatment plant level or much larger sites like our landfill. So um that I don't think is really gonna happen based on this regulation. But I guess the one thing that I did want to point out, the CWMP does exist, it is on the DPW website. It does have a section, a big section, on onsite use and Title V system, onsite system. So um I I guess I would say that whatever is contemplated here needs to be consistent with that CWMP, which in my mind supersedes anything that the, or needs to be on the same path as the CWMP that we think that's done on the Board of Health level or town level at that, because it is a comprehensive wastewater wastewater management plan. So I'll I'll leave it there, and if anybody wants to discuss the CWMP or PFAS in general, they can email me or stop by the office anytime.
All right, thanks, Chuck.
I had a quick comment, just, no, 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 just so it's, it sounds like there's a lot of pieces. We have a section, DPW. We have a section, DPW has a section, Board of Health has. Does it make sense to make a small subcommittee of a group of you to talk about it?
Well, I think Peter wants to go around to all the boards first, and then let's see what comes out of it, would be my suggestion.
Can we ask Peter what the timeline, that he wants to like to-
Yeah, what are, what are your schedule, Peter? Are you going to the other boards, are we the first?
No, I went through zoning last week. They, they had no comments, no edits, they said fuck, they agreed that, that we need something to protect the water sources. They thought, you know, this was fine with, with the understanding that we may, in the future, need to make amendments. You're second, CONCON is tomorrow. Then we'll probably wait a week or two weeks. When you tell us how much time you need to get your comments to us, I don't wanna go to the select board with half a document, if you will. I'd like to go to them and say, this document reflects zoning plan and CONCON and the Board of Health. And then we'll, we go through all the public meetings and all that stuff.
All right, I think I'll leave it up to the select board on subcommittees, what they wanna do, they wanna form. I think, I think what we should do is just try to get our comments to Peter collectively. I'm thinking maybe sue's the repository, or anyone have any other ideas or thoughts?
Well, I just pulled up the Massachusetts Regulations for Board of Health, and I don't see that they have jurisdiction to, for this issue. So I'd like to know that, that from town council, what they have, if they have jurisdiction. And it's not that I'm against the idea of this.
One of our comments.
And so that's my biggest comment to start with. And I think the other thing is, if, given our experience working on zoning, this is a complex matter, and it's administration, when I look at the complexity of what you're trying to regulate here, it's a huge burden for an applicant, as, and then a huge, a huge burden for the Board of Health to appropriately evaluate all of the technical data that's being requested, and then to evaluate those based on something that is a performance standard. And so I think, I wanna first know that the, that they have, that they have jurisdiction. And then I'm gonna put in a plug for zoning changes, which are moving the stormwater regulations to the general bylaw for more, for broader applicability, and bringing them up to the state standards and referencing those in the zoning for new developments. So a plug for our zoning changes that do much of this in the general bylaw that are currently in our zoning. So they only currently apply to our new permits, and they would more broadly apply. So we agree that this is, that some of these things are needed, and, but I'm not sure. I hate to have the Board of Health spend so much time trying to do this, only to find that they don't have the, the process, because it reads to me like a lot of it's zoning, which would require two thirds. If they wanna suggest zoning changes, then there's a whole process for that, and I think we're open to that. So that's, I think it's a process for me about, that's-
So Ron, I have a question for you, actually. So how does this relate to the Water Quality Task Force? I mean, this, isn't this the same thing?
Well, they went to their, their first, and then they were told to go around and get input from all the boards, and then report back to the select board.
So is this part of the water task force?
No, it came out though.
No, the, we, initially, I went to the Water Resource, let me back up. When I was asked in last October to head this, this effort, I did a little resource, research on who were the experts in the field. In November, I was asked to, by the town, to serve on the Water Resource Committee, which I was honored, and I accepted. I then found out that all the experts that I were looking for were on the committee. So there, there was an issue then, because the committee reports to the select board, and anything that comes out of the committee has to go through the select board. The mass regs prohibit town officials from influencing or being involved in any Board of Health policy, at which point Greg offered $4,000 to hire these people independently to provide, to educate us and to review the proposal. I went to these, the, the two people, actually, Scott Horstley and, and Mike, and asked if I could hire them through the Board of Health to educate us and to review these, and they both said, we'll do it for free. There's no need, you know, to go through all that process. So we're not, we're not really involved with the Water Resource Committee. Yes, they're focusing on new sources of water, they're focusing on conservation. They're not really focusing on regulations to keep the water as, as clean as possible, non-contaminated, from a health, from a health perspective only. This is only from a health perspective. And we clearly got a positive from the Department of Public Health, Department of Environmental Protection, that we have authority to develop policy to protect public health. So again, you know, I don't wanna reinforce that, that comments pro and con need to be on that theme. It needs to be public health related. Anything else is, has nothing to do with us.
Done, Chris Laura?
I don't feel ready to start text editing this document. I think, I, my second Sarah's question about where the jurisdiction falls.
These are the type of comments that we should make.
Okay.
Not, not text editing, I'm talking about overall.
We're kind of keeping it a high level, because I just, I think it's, we could really, this is a 22-page-long document, and-
No, I'm not talking about getting into the weeds here, I'm, you know.
We got our own weeds. We, we got a lot of weeds to cultivate. So I just wanna make, I wanna see if everybody's on the same page with that, though. There are certainly some ideas of merit, but there's a lot of overlap with what we're proposing to do. And, and it sounds, seems to me that another 22-page regulation on land use, which has many different facets, but doesn't, doesn't actually control for PFAS, doesn't control stormwater, non-point source pollution from existing uses, and so forth. I just don't think we should get distracted by this right now.
High-level comments first, jurisdiction, and, you know, can we do our own regs? And all those kinds of comments, I think we should stick with, and then get into the weeds if it, whenever we get those answered. And I'm thinking we do that, maybe give them to Sue, and then Sue can compile them, and then send them on to Peter.
Please send them directly to the Board of Health.
Well, I think we'd like to collectively, you know, give you something from the plan. I mean, I don't think individually we want us to start sending your comments, I mean, unless-
No, I mean, when, when you, when you have a, when you have a consensus document where you've all contributed, instead of sending it to me,
Okay.
I would appreciate if you sent it to the Board of Health, obviously I have access to it.
Okay.
But I think that would be a, a neater, cleaner way to do it.
Are we in agreement, board?
No. Is Gail the appropriate person, or Sue, just questioning?
Who?
Gail or Sue?
Gail or Sue, I don't, I don't care, either one.
I think Sue makes sense. She should be able to synthesize it for us.
She seems like an admin instead.
Do we get, do we get to review it as a board?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think we'll, we'll take them, and then maybe we just-
I would like to see the individual who said what versus no names. Like, I would like to see who's saying.
So maybe we make it just admin, maybe we send it to Gail with our names, and then Gail will just compile them on a Word document, and then send them, then spit it out, put it in on meeting packet, and just for discussion at our future meeting. I don't know if it's gonna be next meeting, 'cause there's three public hearings, so we'll see. Okay, thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
All right, Mr. Stein, and 47 Pleasant Street. This, the applicant is here to deter, to obtain a determination from the planning board under Section 10.5.1, 10.3.5.1P of Ground and Surface Water OLEA Protection District zoning bylaw. P regards to land uses that result in the rendering impervious of more than 15% or 2,500 square feet of any lot, whichever is greater unless a system for artificial recharge or precipitation is provided, which is satisfied factor to the plan.
Sorry.
All right. This will not, and that this will not result in degradation of the groundwater quality. So with that in mind, this was referred to us by, from Paul Orlando, as the applicant is seeking a building permit. Did I get that right, Mr. Stein?
I believe you have- That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so you all have paper copies, and Mr. Stein, you can present.
Can I show my screen?
I have to make you co-host.
I think I made him co-host. I think he can present, my battery's good.
All right, looks like I can do it. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Great. So I just wanted to orient you to the site real quick, and, oh, yeah, I'm Brian Stein with BDS Design, and also I have on the call tonight Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering, who did all the drainage calcs. So just to orient you, we're Pleasant Street in Wilmington. Have this red box here is the site 47 Pleasant. Just wanted to show you, there's an existing home, existing garage, existing shed, and existing paved driveway along with some concrete walkways and a patio, which kind of is in shadow here. We're proposing to raise all of that and build a new home, new driveway, and so forth, garage. We are, get the site plan up here. This is the, site is proposed, home is proposed. We, existing property is currently over the 15% slash 2,500 square feet of impervious. It's around 3270. Our proposed condition is 3260. And as Mike will explain, we are infiltrating a fair amount of that from the roof capture and so forth. So real quick, garage attached to the house with a connector, and the house here, there's a deck off the, off the other side, covered porch, proposed paved driveway, stone area of the driveway, which is a turnaround, and then a couple of minor walkways up to the entrances. So Mike, if you wanna take over and talk about your proposed design, that'd be great.
Sure, thanks, Brian, again, Mike Novak's in the hearing. Can everyone hear me okay?
Now we can.
Okay, great. So as, yeah, as Brian said, we're, we're in a situation where we're tearing down the existing house and putting up new one. We're over the threshold. So what we did is we performed some onsite soil testing, found some ledge. What we did, we were able to get about, about five feet or so, a little more, down, determined native material, didn't see any groundwater. So what I went ahead and did is size two systems, one to the north of the plant, one to the south of the plant, and to take the entire roof area as proposed. The systems will capture and infiltrate up to the 100 year with, with some overflow beyond, at, at or above the 100 year storm. So because of that, and the, the size of the, of the lot, I went ahead and did a pre and post analysis to determine the runoff with some stormwater released, and we are reducing in both rate and volume for 210 and 100 year storms of, of site runoff, pre to post. So again, only overflow from the systems at or above the 100 year storm. Everything else will stay contained and infiltrated fully within those two proposed systems for the entire roof area. Model the remainder of the impervious area on site, we're still reducing from pre to post in all storms. The detail shown on the plant, the systems, the areas to the, to the systems are shown on the plant as well. A little hard to see on the screen, but you can see that the majority of the house goes to the larger system, the remainder of the house goes to the smaller system. I think that's it in a nutshell, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So on the plan, it says 880 square feet, what does that represent on the calc?
If you could point to the part you're referring to, be happy to-
Right, in the impervious area, Mike.
Oh, that's, that's the additional impervious area that's left on the site after the full proposed development. That is not captured from the, yeah, so we have the 3,200 plus existing. The total proposed, as Brian mentioned, was 10 under. And then we take out the roof area, so we're only left with a, with a net or a delta of 880.
So what percent, what percent of that is that of the?
What percent of, I lost you a little bit, sorry.
What's the percent impervious?
Based on the lot size?
Yes.
That would be, just so we find the lot area. That's on the plan, that's why you asked. I'll just have to find the lot.
6,200 or something?
Okay, so, yeah, we're, it's about 15, just a little 14% impervious.
3,000.
That is, that is not captured from, to the system.
No, the lot's 6,000 something.
Yeah, so the lot is 9,266, and they're proposing 3,260, I just don't have the count.
Oh, is, oh, that's in the application?
Yeah. I had notes at home, I think it comes out to like 35%?
Three out of nine.
Yeah.
That's a third.
Is the driveway asphalt?
Yes, most of it. There's an area of the turnaround we made stone. Crushed stone.
So if that were all crushed stone, what would, does that would change the calculation?
If the drive, the entire driveway was stone?
Yes.
It would just reduce the, the difference from pre to post further. But again, we're, we're under already when you compare pre to post. So it would just reduce it further, that, that doesn't change the system size, because the driveway is not being captured.
Well, you're under because of the, the-
Existing.
The subsurface, the proposed infiltration systems, not because, right, without those, you're not under. So you're relying on the infiltration systems to get-
But we, we're under the existing condition, too.
Understood.
Did he mention any earth removal? Because it's gonna be new foundation, that's why I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
So it looks like you're creating new foundations, it's, what's, have you reviewed the earth removal bylaw for compliance?
I honestly have not. We only have this area of the house here that's, that has a basement.
So that was my question.
Is it existing basement?
There is an existing basement in the old house.
Are you proposing a basement?
Is it the same position?
No.
No.
Are you creating a new basement?
Yes.
Okay, so then-
There, there is, there is an existing basement in the old house, which we're removing.
I think we do have to look at the earth removal bylaw.
I think they're longer than that, Christina?
So based on that, that was gonna be my question about the basement. So some of the things that we've seen in the past is the historical high groundwater table level. I didn't see that here, and so you said you went down five feet, but I don't see the plans for the basement. How deep would the basement go?
The basement says the standard height four of seven, ten, but the house is, you know, two and a half feet out of the ground, probably.
So the basement will be more than five feet, though. So my question is, you haven't gone down deeper to see where groundwater actually is, or do you have any data?
That's on the plan, that's on the plan, estimated high groundwater, Mike.
Yeah, okay, so where's that?
Yeah, just to be, if I may, just to be clear, the reason we didn't go any deeper is because we had ledge. We, the machine that I had on site could not get through the, the rock that we had, and the site as it exists now didn't have a lot of other places to, to do any testing. So my, my test bit shows that we didn't observe any groundwater, you're correct in saying that we didn't go as, probably as deep as the basement would be, but there's no reason that we should, I wouldn't anticipate any groundwater based on the soil that I saw, but again, that, you, you're correct, I didn't, I didn't observe to the depth of the basement.
Okay, so, in that same by law that we're addressing, we're addressing P, O addresses that, and it shouldn't be, groundwater shouldn't be within four feet of where you finished the grade, is my understanding? So where do you estimate that the groundwater is? I can use historical data.
Yeah, so I've, I've looked at a historical data for around the corner on another project, and the historical data shown, probably, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going by memory, but that was roughly nine feet. The way I read the bylaws, it says the existing historic groundwater level. So it looked to be about nine feet on an average, it obviously fluctuated, but I would say over. The span that I looked at, it was, it was a nine foot depth. So nine foot down from where we are here is fifty-four. You're down forty-five would be groundwater potentially. So elevation forty-five versus fifty-four. So if the first floor, Brian, is going to be, do you have an idea of where that's going to sit?
I came around top, I had fifty-six and a half, fifty-seven.
So fifty, so say fifty-six five, fifty-six five minus eight feet for rounding purposes, that's forty. And that's well above the, the forty-five estimated groundwater.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no problem, where, what, where did you lose me?
Groundwater.
Groundwater.
No, no problem, I'm sorry, I'll sum up as fast as I can. I did look at this for another project around the corner. I determined that the average historical groundwater elevation was plus to minus nine feet. Nine feet down to fifty-four, and plus at forty-five. Brian just said the first floor would be about fifty to the half, down the rounded up eight feet of basement. We're talking that elevation of forty-eight and a half, which is well above the elevation of forty-five. So I don't think we'll have any issues with intercepting historical groundwater with this foundation.
Everybody hear the whole thing there?
I got.
You got it?
I got the math, I got the elevational math. Yeah. So I guess my question is, and I, I'm, this seems fine, I just would like to make sure, whatever we decide to, if it's not within four, I mean, if they find it, we need to be notified ASAP, and then it needs to be reviewed again. That's my concern, because I think the water, because of ledge, maybe there isn't great historical information. So soon as, if they do hit groundwater, this may need to be revisited.
Well, we can condition it.
Yep.
And the building inspector, can you make that?
Yep.
Ron, can you tell us what our jurisdiction is here for this review?
Yeah, Sue, could you define our jurisdiction on this? I think it was just a determination on impervious?
No.
Yeah, can I?
Drainage.
Drainage. Tonight, tonight, sorry, tonight's determination, it's just a determination to assure that, that there's an adequate system of ground charge, given that it's thirty-five point one eight percent, and the maximum is thirty-five percent.
So this is the same thing which is in your bylaw?
According to my calculations.
With the infiltration?
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yeah, I was just going to ask where the existing curb cut is.
Yeah.
That, we have to come back for a curb cut later.
No. The existing curb cut is further back.
It, it's, it's right here, right where it says fifty-two, where the existing driveway is.
Have you been in front of the ZBI?
We don't need to.
Okay, so this is one of those situations, it seems to me that the building permit is being potentially granted before the curb cut has been granted, so, right? And, and so it seems to me that the right thing for the building inspector to do is to put this back to us to say a curb cut application is needed. And given that, without knowing what this street is, it is closer to the intersection than it was previously. And so therefore, without a site walk or any knowledge of the site, just based on what I'm seeing here, you're making, the curb cut is, is potentially more dangerous. On the other hand, to access the garage from the current curb cut is that same problem we had on the other one. You know, would, it require more impervious surface.
Well, unless you flip the.
The flip, yeah, or change the, a design. But it does seem to me that the curb cut in its current place does not serve the building. And therefore, I think we should talk to Paul and say, let's try to get on the same page here with these curb cuts and approve the curb cut before we approve the building permit. A curb cut that makes sense for the new design, seems to me. That's not what's before us right now, that said, but what is the distance? Can I, sir, can I ask the applicant, was, just out of curiosity, what's the distance from the corner to the curb cut, the new curb cut, roughly?
Roughly, probably, from here, probably fifty, fifty-five feet.
How wide, and how wide is your proposed driveway?
It's about eighteen feet here, because the garage is twenty-four.
Probably two eighteen, so it's about thirty-six.
And it's.
It looks like you have a.
Well, no, I'm saying from, from this point, it's about fifty, fifty-five feet from the front part of this driveway, first part of the driveway. Existing curb cuts at least twenty-four feet.
Thirty-six.
So we like to look at that for our safety and go out there, and why don't you get back to us with a curb cut, curb cut application?
Save yourself a.
Yeah, that was, that was the plan, this was, you know, I'll, I'll be frank, initially, we, I was told by Paul that, given that we were going to be under the impervious of the old house, we didn't have to come for, for this permit, or for this determination initially, so after a number of months, and, you know, a building permit application, we, he then said we did, so that's, we were rushing to kind of get this in, as you know. So we, we can cer, we will certainly come back with the, with the curb cut permit application soon.
Yeah, and I would imagine that, I don't know what year the house that's sitting there is currently built, but I would assume they do not have an underground infiltration system. I'm sure zoning occurred after.
Right.
So I'm concerned that they would get the recommendation they didn't need to come to the planning board because they're under what is existing. That needs to be communicated, that that should always, they should always come to the planning board, because they do not have underground infiltration systems.
So to follow up on my prior comment, can we make a motion to approve this under section? What's, where's my agenda?
But I'm, but I'm, I'm concerned we're going to approve something in the driveway, my.
Here, here, yeah.
Five point, ten point three point five point one.
Ten point three point five point one, with the provision to be put on, to be added to the plan, that prior to work commencing, a curb cut will be applied for, or, or prior to a building permit being issued, a, a recommendation to the building inspector is that a curb cut be approved. And secondly, that the existing curb cut, curb cut and impervious surface will be abandoned. And thirdly, that an as-built be submitted to the building inspector following construction.
So are, they're going to have to blast then, if they hit ledge within five feet?
Then that's a blasting permit. We can't foresee that, right?
No, we can't, I'm just concerned about the four, I don't know, feet high water, that's all.
So my three conditions would be that a recommendation to the building inspector, because I don't think we can tell them what to do, to, to require a curb cut in advance of the building permit. Secondly, that the existing curb cut would be abandoned, and what was, and the third one was that as-built be filed with the building inspector and the planning board following construction.
I would like to add a fifth, if groundwater is reached, then work stops, and this is reconsidered, right?
That would be up to the building inspector to enforce.
So, so we could add, we could do the same thing, we could give him advice that the building inspector be.
Be.
It's actually a prohibited use.
What's prohibited?
What?
Construction within four feet of the groundwater.
Groundwater.
Not, not for buildings, not for buildings, foundations.
Actually.
Most of Manchester would be, if not for the bill, I mean, water, groundwater is pretty high in a lot of areas.
And except for, especially for building foundations.
But that's, this is a, this is a issue, this, that's not an issue that's unique to this site, right? This is a, an issue that anytime anybody digs in Manchester, to Laura's point, they potentially could come and find groundwater, and it's up to the building inspector to look in the hole and say, oh, look, we have groundwater. I, I mean, I don't know what the answer to that problem is, but I'm.
Well, we're making a determination that they don't need a permit because this filtration system is sufficient, right? So my question is, if the conditions change and it's not sufficient, we need to be notified.
Well, excavating the groundwater isn't going to change, the infiltrations are, systems are adequately above groundwater. Whatever they find in the basement is not going to affect that. And groundwater tables fluctuate seasonally and with, you know, other conditions. But the infiltration, I don't think we can put a condition on a project when it's mid-construction.
Well, for, that, we did have one, though, that they ended up, we approved, the planning board approved, they ended up digging the foundation way lower than they had said. And they had to come back and review the infiltration system, and now he's on a on the corner of Pulaski and Pleasant, and now he's hooked up to go into the town sewage drains, and he's on a constant sump pump, and so, to your point, I mean, they, sometimes you do have to come back after you've hit the water table, and what was approved was not sufficient for drainage. You remember that, Ron?
I remember it, but I don't think it came before us, did it, the sump pump did?
Oh, not the sump pump, but he, they had to redo their underground water infiltration system, because it wasn't.
I think Chuck D'Amico involved with that, swear he could stop it.
Yep.
Okay, so.
So can, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
I, I'm not as familiar with your planning board, but I was on Hamilton Planning Board for a while, and I, this is a determination, correct, it's not a special permit?
Correct.
Are you allowed, are you, are you allowed to condition a determination?
That's a good question.
I thought, yeah, I, I'm pretty sure a special permit varies.
Well, we're determining it based on the facts that you gave us, so if the facts change.
No, but I was adding conditions to the determination.
Right.
Through his point.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Sue, can you help us with that question?
So I would agree that a determination means that you do not need a special permit. Christina is correct that if, if during construction one hits groundwater, they are in fact required to notify the town, it is the DPW, and they together work through a solution. So, and it's, so, yeah, so I think he's right, you don't condition a determination, I think so. I think your condition, Sarah, could be handled offsite, and I think, I mean, off, outside of this process, with a discussion with the, with Paul, and I know that he intended to put the driveway curb cut next. I think you, your determination is that it does not need a special permit, because it has adequate drainage, and then, you know, from there.
So my.
But what about the curb?
The terminations could be a memo to the building inspector that we've looked at this, it doesn't have a curb cut that we have approved, and that we would.
So can I offer a friendly amendment to your motion?
Of course.
That we, that we submit comments as part of the determination to the building inspector. And the comments would include those conditions that you mentioned, Sarah, and even Christina's, as far as that goes. They're just comments on it.
Comments to the building inspector.
Laura?
For me, this is out of sequence, if we approve a curb cut first, that tells us where the driveway is going to go, then that helps to calculate the entire impervious sequence, surface on the site. And if we're approving a driveway that's a theoretical right now, before we approve the curb cut, that may be in a different part of the lot, then what we approved today for the impervious surface, regardless of where the groundwater table is, may change.
So why don't we do that, why don't you submit the curb cut first, and then we can go ahead with the determination? That make sense?
Uh, that depends.
What, what's the issue?
Well, well, Paul and, the building inspector had, had said that once we have this, this determination, this approval for the drainage, that we could move forward. Now, part of it is just getting this thing started, as it's, as it's taken a little while. And we have every intention of going back pretty quickly with the curb cut. I understand where you're going with, with the driveway and so forth, but the driveway, you know, isn't part of the drainage system, which we're here for.
It's part of the impervious surface.
Correct, correct. But we're here for the drainage, the drainage system. And that's, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but you're, you're capturing all the roof, you're not capturing the driveway or the.
Are you saying you're getting a building permit with the drainage, with this approval?
I'm sorry?
Are you getting a building permit? Based on this approval, this determination?
All I, all I know is that, I mean, we, we, again, we know we need a curb cut permit, but that wasn't, well, it was my understanding from Paul that he, you know, that we'd be the next step in the process with the building permit. I think it's been through all the departments, and they were waiting on, we were waiting on this drainage.
Well, I, I appreciate the fact that you've been around the barn on this, but we have only seen this for tonight. And so I think we are being asked to kind of de facto, at, to Laura's point, we're occur, we're, we don't, this is, the, the, the location of the driveway and the curb cut are one and the same. And therefore, we should see the curb cut at the same time, if you want, and the, the, the impervious surface is part, the proposed driveway is the impervious surface. So I'd suggest that you come in with a curb cut application, we take it up in there two, in two weeks, and do our very best to give you a determination and a curb cut approval, or, or some other thing before that. We can do a site walk before the next two weeks, and then you'll be good to go. And I'm sorry that that's the case, but we just had, the problem here is, before, earlier in the meeting, we had this exact situation where, or, or maybe it was the other day, I don't know, I can't remember anymore. One thing is approved under one provision, and we're trying to move to something that's more coordinated. So, and you, because the last thing you want to do is get to your, whenever your curb cut happens to come before us, and find out that we, that we don't think it's the safe place for the curb cut. So I know it sounds bureaucratic, but you're, we're saving you a step here, I, you know. So I know you want to get in the ground and, but to me, it seems like, come back with a curb cut, and let's take it up in two weeks.
But is it only two weeks, because we have to notify Butters?
Yeah, you do.
Brian, you have to notify Butters with an approved Butters list.
Yep.
And, and then seven days later, you put forward your application, so it can be done within two weeks.
Okay. Sound like a plan? I guess we don't have a choice.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Some way that we can put this into a formal process to talk to Paul, someone can relay to Paul.
Still haven't come in. Yeah, this is the first time we're in a while that we're seeing a curb cut before exactly.
Well, I mean, this is the third, third and a.
Yeah.
Usually it's already in.
So we're trying to avoid that.
Thank you. I thought you were like being sarcastic that it was fine, I was like, alright, thank you.
Exactly.
It's annoying, it is annoying.
This is exactly the same situation as when, the same exact lot configuration as when the Mere Park.
Exactly.
Extension, same exact thing.
And when we turn this over to DPW. This is my.
I have that concern too.
This is my concern.
Big concern, yeah.
So we want to take a little bio break before we get into.
Yeah, sure, quick stretch break.
And you'll take five minutes and then I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Sarah Creighton.
Okay, yeah, let's take five.
I turned the air and everything off, I was freezing.
Cool, put your jacket on, is everyone warm now or are you good? Okay, I'm just making sure. Yeah, okay. And you need a stretch break, right? We'll be back. These are creaky.
So and then remember got one of these packages?
Uh, no, I don't.
So, or you came late, so this is, this is the package for tonight and one, 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 that's leaving.
You have any, okay, neither of the things?
No, yeah.
No, I got you, okay.
One, one and one. But these are.
But you already had the one on your left, your right, the one you just picked up, you just already had it.
You might have this one.
You got that one back, thank you.
And then that one, and then that one's for Gary, I guess, whatever, whatever the gauche appear.
Okay.
On my computer.
This is the one I.
So they're both the same, these are really, I think I'm going to hold the public hearings at the same time because they're the same application from what I'm told.
Oh, yeah.
And then this one will be the town's application on the parking spot.
Um, have we, if we could do this one first, because I have to recuse myself, I'm coming back from a a site, I'm coming back from EMS Dartmouth, so um so.
Are we not going to meet next Monday?
Well, or, or next, yeah, I think Yom Kippur is Tuesday, so that means we have to meet Monday.
I think Yom Kippur is today.
Oh, no, Rosh Hashanah.
Is Monday, so we have to meet.
No, it is Tuesday, so we have to meet Monday, if we're going to meet, we'll see how much we get done tonight.
Okay. Yeah, let's not try to go beyond ten.
Oh, God, no. Survive.
You meet an hour?
It's so much better in person, though, honest to God. I mean, it, it's hard, it's not better for the people.
Hard with this, but.
But. I just feel like you can have conversation a little bit more about, you know, my mind got changed on a couple of things tonight because of conversation.
Yeah.
So.
Understood.
So this is, these, let's put these for Gary.
Water.
Oh, I could take a drink too.
No water.
Sorry, I haven't gotten back to you.
No, that's okay, I know, it's, I was away. Alright.
My life, God, this room is very comfortable.
Yeah, it's good.
Comfortable, I can hear everything except for some of the applicants.
Oh, yeah. And we get to look at the quilt. Which I do like. Alright, what do we try to do? Um.
Hold it.
We have different scores at different times at different places. Walk a leg, so we gotta keep it.
Look, I see if your house is uh.
No, it's there. It's there. Oh, do you know that theme beach used to be called Old Neck Beach? And that, oh, it's best point, all of it is the old neck.
Alright, it's only, I know everybody, I'm going to mute, everybody mute. Christina, you're, well, everybody else is muted. Does anybody need a copy of the motions that we did last time? So is there a water bottle pool here or I gotta go all the way down?
No, it's downstairs. And they actually replaced it, they put a stony broken one.
Does anybody need, Laura or Ron, do you need copies of that motion, those motions that we did last time?
Uh, sure.
Oh, I have one extra copy. I have the one that I scribbled all over.
I got one, I got one that you can share.
So Chris, is that room five? There's two bathrooms at, at the top of the steps.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Oh, okay, you just felt like doing some stairs.
Well, I figured that you all, all the women, women, I was gonna be the good guy.
Just making sure you know.
Yeah. And we do, what's, what's this crocker business?
That's next week.
Yep.
For next week.
Oh, next week.
Crocker, Manchester Marine and the spec, and the field.
Oh, and this, oh, God.
You know, this is. Do we have a plan for that, is there a plan? Okay, so I'm going to put. Okay, so, okay. Um. Oh, I'm sorry.
And welcome back. So at this point, I'd like to just turn the meeting over to our Vice Chair Sarah Creighton to continue with the master plan and reclassification uh.
Okay. Um, great, thank you, everybody, I'm going to take a motion to continue the public hearing for, on zoning changes, uh, the deliberation portion of the public hearing. So take a motion to do this, do so.
So moved.
Ron has moved and Chris has seconded, I do need a roll call, I think, on this, Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Um Christina?
Yes.
Very, all voting in favor, thank you. Um, at the last working session on the twentieth, we had some proposed motions um and we worked through articles eleven, ten, nine, uh oh, eight was adult entertainment, we did not talk about that. But I had not received any motions for changes to the adult entertainment proposal, so unless you, if anybody has some, please feel free to let me know. Um, so I'm going to suggest we start at the top now and work with articles one four, because three and uh, two and three are the general bylaws and the um numbering, we're at least at, at right now. So let's start with um.
Can, can I do, can we go back?
Let's go back after we've had, I know, because we're all going to think about things, but let's see if we can. My goal here is to see if we can get some of these to town council, so that they have time to review them and give us comments if they have concerns um before the warrant closes, so. And so select board, right, so um, so I'm hoping that some of these we can move through fairly quickly. So article one is to modify sections one through four. Does everybody have a, the proposed motions? I have two, an extra copy, if anybody needs one, do you need this?
Yeah, I'll share with you.
Oh, you'll share with him, okay, and here's, you can resist if you want. You got that? Got it for, uh, okay, here, Laura.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so um, we had a couple of suggestions, um uh mostly, well, not to prejudge, so the first was um none of the, no, no suggestions for section one and then section two, which is the definition section under impervious surface, um delete and runoff. So the um, the surface or land, impervious surface is it's the uh surface or land covering that prohibits penetration of water into underlying ground layers. As a result, rain and snow are unable to infiltrate into the ground. And, and the proposal is strike and runoff, I think the.
Where are we?
Uh, on the definition of impervious surface. So it's the strike and runoff.
Yeah.
So.
We have a line number?
Uh, yeah, it's line two eight, two oh nine.
Is that because runoff is the same thing as?
Well, the, yeah, well, it's, I think it, it's that the result is a runoff, but as written, it's saying it's.
Grammatically.
Yeah, it's grammatically, I think it just unable to infiltrate into the ground is sufficient.
Well, doesn't it infiltrate into the ground and then runoff? So.
No.
Underwa, underground?
No, because that wouldn't be runoff, runoff is surface water.
Yeah.
But it is just poorly stated, it might have been mine, but uh.
But just, I think, it's taking and runoff.
How about uh, result in runoff?
Resulting in runoff?
Resulting in runoff, if you want to put a comma after ground.
Okay, that's fine.
That's typo.
Yeah, typo, does anybody have a problem with that one? Okay. Um, so Sue and Gail, um, hopefully Gail has these. We're just going to agree that that's going to be a typo, it's going to be comma, resulting in runoff. Sue, are you still there?
I am.
Great, thank you.
Runoff is one word.
Runoff, okay, runoff is one word. Okay, um, the next one was home occupation to add software developers, other professionals working from home before similar occupations. It was a very dated um uh description of home occupations. Currently, it reads customary home occupations, including photographers, artists, home cooking, dressmaking, millinery, hairdressing. And the proposal is add software developers, other professionals working for home.
Can we strike all of that and just say professions working from home?
Well, we had gone around and around with this with Bobrovsky and uh Dick fell back onto what we have, so I think that the assumption was made that, you know, people working from home is not a home occupation, um.
I don't know, I think a lot of people work from home now, um, as a, as a sole proprietor or that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just giving background, I.
Concern was anything that you don't have a customer coming to your residence was fine, anything else was out of the norm.
You had to say, you had to write fine.
Yeah, so I think that's what we were struggling with at that time.
That's the clause we need then, that there's no sort of retail or direct services.
Similar occupation, how about add the software developers and other professions working from home where uh without um.
I don't even know why we need software developers, but.
Well, it was just a suggestion.
Software developers and dressmaking. It's getting stranger by the minute.
So where were these, can you just refer to where these suggestions come from?
Uh, this one, I, it was suggested by Ann Harrison. I have it in the motion, the proposed motion, do you need a copy?
Oh, I don't have one. Is it in the chair with Chris?
This is the, the document we had last time.
Oh, sorry, I do have it, thank you, thank you, thank you. Are you guys sharing it, is this an extra, I think?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Would you like one? Oh, okay, I thought you'd share, we're sharing one.
This one starts with three, so this one.
So. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You have one that starts with?
Could we just? I like five persons, you know, you need to.
President.
You're not looking at the right thing, Ron, you want to look at this, this is the motions.
You don't know, but I mean, she wants this.
Oh, oh.
I thought they were sharing, I thought it was.
All you gotta do is add, subtract one on the article.
No, one of these big ones, with the numbers.
Yes, that one just, you just.
This one starts with three.
Right, so just subtract one from, two, from every article number in your BISA.
Does anybody do this or no?
No, thank you.
Okay, yep, it's the same, just. Yeah, okay. So dressmaking would have been a service where someone came to your house, I'm just trying to understand what we're after here. I don't think, I think it's a very dated.
Yeah.
What's millinery, I don't even know.
Hat making.
I've never heard that, you know, what it had to do with the millinery.
It might be the existing definition is what the, is we're trying to.
Something?
I don't know, I don't think we need to get too hung up on it, but.
Yeah. Yeah, why don't we just, just do what Ann said?
Yeah, I, I think it's.
Why, I mean, I guess, why, why are we going to add something, just, we've been talking about it for three years.
How about?
And we're going to add it just because, I'm just not.
When do we, do we ever refer to home occupation, it would be helpful if we knew the context, what we're regulating.
So when we discussed this, we, we had concerns about people creating.
Businesses.
Yes.
Businesses.
Well, businesses are okay.
Businesses with a retail direct to, direct to the consumer kind of a relation, right?
Concerned about coming and going, deliveries.
Traffic.
Traffic.
Parking, usual suspects.
Uh huh, yeah.
Well, we currently allow all of that, I assume.
Right, right, if you're making cakes from your home.
So um, our use table.
Yeah.
Has a accessory use, which is customary home occupation.
Okay.
Conducted in the dwelling by a person residing on the premises. And it's allowed in all of our uses.
Okay.
So customary, so that's the same customary home occupations conducted in the dwelling by a person residing on the premises. That's what the use table has and that's.
Probably the only place it comes from.
And that is a note fourteen, sorry, note fourteen says, provided there are no visible displays of goods from the street and no exterior advertising, except a sign of not more than two square feet, providing such occupation shall not be carried on in an accessory building. So that's the proposed, so it's really a not great consequence in the definition section. The, the use table seems to kind of handle it.
So the other thing is we don't redefine a person resident on the premises, is that even a complete actual sentence? By a person resident on the premises, so there's no definition of resident.
It's all living there.
Living.
Well, living.
Living there on the premises.
So my question is, and this came up before, and I, I think we're just not closing loops, I think we're just maybe, so if someone had an accessory unit, an accessory building, not a dwelling unit, could you rent that out to someone else for a business?
No, because that use table says you can't, the use table says you can't, but it's independent of the, the definition.
The definition is a definition, it doesn't give any rights or um, the rights are from, are in, are in section four. So I think you're.
Why don't we just say C section, the table?
Well, that, well, we're just doing is defining home occupation, I think it's not a big deal. So I, I guess, can I just try to close this out by saying, I'm, I, I'm suggesting that we add software developers and other professions working from home by a person resident on the premises.
Sarah?
Sarah? Yeah?
Sarah, this is Sue. Um, so the last draft of Bobrovsky's um draft, draft eight has home occupation um defined as an accessory use as set forth in section three point three. I don't know how this old.
Yeah, exactly, I must say, I don't think we.
In the, this whole, this.
I have no idea either.
So I think we need, I think maybe we need to look and see if we've got the most current um definitions up there, because that one definitely is not.
I think we have the most current definitions in the packet of materials that we've, I don't know what Bobrovsky's draft eight, that's like two years ago.
But we didn't read it like this, that's why.
Okay, that, that may be the case, but. That, that may be the case, but we can't, I, I'm gonna overrule Sue's suggestion about going back to. I mean, if, if we have a good definition for the home occupation, great, but I don't wanna go back to draft eight on anything. Cause we have long since, uh, gone around and around on it.
That's kind of my exact point. We're taking more suggestions after we deliberated this for like hours, so.
Well, if it's not important to anybody besides me, then let's just pass over it, that's fine. Is anybody, it's not, I don't think it's important, actually, anyway. Let's not, do they want to make a motion to that effect or let's just move on?
Move on.
Okay, great. We, um, then the other thing is, uh, we identified that we had not made a definition of municipal use. So, as Sarah Melish was pointing that out in our conversation with her, so I looked it up and proposed, uh, to insert. In section two, a new definition of municipal use, facilities or land used by the town of Manchester by the sea.
So, we have.
I will say, we kind of have it in the use table.
We do have it in the use table. We don't have it in the definitions, so again, doesn't confer use.
Ocean.
I would say that we did go through an exercise and it was determined that we weren't gonna have definitions for everything in the use table.
Everything, so if we don't need it, then that's fine.
So, we have municipal yards and facilities, town yards and related storage facilities for de-icing sand. So, I think this is really close to municipal facility, I mean, use.
We talked about this one before too, just Sue was gonna interject something.
Yeah, Sue, go ahead.
I was gonna say the same thing. We've already worked through this. It's in, I'm sorry, but it's in eight, which was, I don't think we've made any large changes. To the definition since that was put out there, um, and it's municipal yards and facilities.
Okay, so you miss, you think municipal yards and facilities is sufficient?
Yeah, I think that, I think that there's an older version.
Municipal yards and facilities is not, um, playing fields or town hall or, or police.
It's definitely a facility.
Can we just?
It's a facility.
Related storage facilities. But can we just go back to the definition part of eight and capture anything that's new that we looked at and put it back in here? So, we get rid of the old language? Hopefully, we don't need to debate it again, I don't know.
That takes another public meeting.
Yeah.
No.
What about the harbor?
Yeah, like, um, I think that we.
It gets added to Sarah's list for future.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we wanna add a municipal use, um, or just not? That's the question.
Add it, what, what are we adding?
What I'm proposing is just facilities or land used by the town of Manchester by the sea. So, that would be a police station or, it's more than just. Town yards and storage facilities.
You're using facilities within another definition already.
Well, storage facilities modified.
Facilities can be used more than once, I think.
Well, it's definitely.
We've defined facility.
It's the word that you're defining though. How about buildings? Buildings or land used by the town of Manchester by the sea? Okay?
Yep.
Um, I'll take a motion to, uh, add municipal use as buildings or land used by the town of Manchester by the sea.
Or infrastructure? Buildings, land or.
Structure or infrastructure.
Structures instead of buildings?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Structure.
Is that a building?
No, buildings, land and infrastructure.
Yeah, all of those systems.
Yeah, fine.
Buildings, land or infrastructure used by the town of Manchester by the sea.
So, how will we capture your beach?
Land.
Land, okay.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'm gonna move that and Chris is gonna second that.
Is water?
Okay, um, we got a lot to do tonight.
It doesn't have water.
Is water part of it though? It's not land.
Yeah, it's land under the water.
No, it's not. We don't, we don't. Couple feet out.
Okay, all in favor of the new buildings, land or infrastructure? It's a six to nothing, oh, six zero, thank you. Okay, um, are there any other, um, definitions? There is an alphabetizing problem. That's a typo. Long-term care facilities is out of order. Any other, uh, comments on section two? All right, hearing none. Um, section three, uh, districts, um, I didn't receive any motions, proposed motions to modify that.
Long-term is under the sub thing of senior housing, so I think it's in the right spot.
It needs to be indented.
It's indented, yeah, on the copy I have.
All right, can you tell me what you're talking about?
Three forty-three? It's the copy I have.
Well, okay, yes, but, um.
So, they're alphabetized under senior housing.
No, we have, we have it in two places.
Yep, two seventy-six.
All right, let's strike the two seventy-six.
Yep.
Um, cause, uh, two seven, line two seventy-six.
Oh, it's in both spots.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good catch. Okay, so that brings us to section four. Um, the use table. Well, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, long-term care facility can be, um, homes for the aged, but it could be a hospital, it could be a sanitarium. So, they're not all senior housing related, long-term care facility. That's why it was separate.
Oh, because they're not always senior, okay. Right, could be for, good catch, Mary.
Not a good catch.
Okay.
Back in.
Whiplash over here.
Back in and put it in the right alphabetizing. Okay, thank you. So, everybody should change their footer to, all right, it should be article one. This is old, the footer. Maybe you're.
I'm thinking of looking at my.
Okay, so, um, now it's to section four, um, and I had a couple of, um. Section C. There's, uh, we don't have a number three. We should just renumber four to three. That's easy. And then, um, the raising or keeping of livestock and pooling poultry, horses or cows regulated by the Board of Health. And this is exactly what our current bylaw has. However, the, I believe the Board of Health regulation is more than six poultry.
Yes, twelve poultry.
More than twelve poultry?
What number are you on?
Twelve.
Twelve, so I think we should make this consistent with the Board of Health, because poultry is.
Why even say?
Go count your chickens.
Well, no, this is about, cause you have to have, if you have more than twelve, you need a special permit.
No, what I'm saying is if you just say, including more than. Poultry, horses or cows regulated by the Board of Health. Why do we just?
More than the number?
Exceeding.
Exceeding.
Exceeding those regulated.
I mean, this has reason, could have six horses.
Sarah, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, the Board of Health just had a meeting on this recently and they changed some of it, so. Um, just to let you know, they've, they've modified that recently.
Well, let's just make it consistent with the Board of Health, not say what the numbers are.
Becky, was it adopted immediately?
I don't know, cause I had to go to, uh, select board meeting, so I, but they, they definitely, they were changing.
Chickens?
Compo, various components, numbers and types.
Okay, so how do we make this so that if you are, if you're subject to the Board of Health, it's a special?
So, I was gonna say, I don't think this should be planning board at all. I think there should be BOH, all of them. We're not really involved.
E O H doesn't really do zoning bylaws though, so maybe this shouldn't even be in some of the bylaws.
So, we currently.
Why are we responsible?
We currently have this in our current. Bylaws and raising animals is a land use.
Raising animals is a land use, so that would be, it makes sense to have it here.
So, it's in the general bylaws, I think that. Raising of the animals, but we don't require any amount of, certain amount of land or.
Right, it just says, as regulated by the Board of Health. What else does it need to say?
I think we just say BOH.
So, Chris put BOH across the board.
Just say keeping your livestock, uh, as regulated by the Board of Health, done.
Which it says already.
So, I think Christina's point is in all districts, you put, you put BOH as the, uh.
Oh, BOH rather than.
And is that a special permit though? That's a special permit.
No, or we could just say, right, we can add BOH as BOH regulations up in the, up in the.
I'm looking at C point four.
We'll just make a note.
We have nothing to do with it.
Okay, so, so we'll just make a note. That it's regulated by the Board of Health. Okay, um, I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna put.
What, the planning board or BOH?
No, I'm gonna put BOH, and then I'm gonna put up in the notes up above, um.
Regulated.
BOH. Indicates. See Board of Health regulations. See.
Is this gonna be the only BOH then?
Yep. I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm trying not to change. I'm trying to make it consistent.
I don't understand why we're changing it. C point four.
Well, right now, it's a special permit by the planning board, so it is changing it.
So, you're trying to make it not a special permit by the planning board?
Right.
Because it's.
Currently, we, we just took the existing stuff and.
Yeah.
Put it in, into this table without making changes.
I see, yeah.
So, but I think that this is a, I would say.
Okay.
So, um, do I have a motion to change it to Board of Health, BOH instead of planning board? Um, across the board, except for in, uh, I guess across all of them, right?
Yeah, because we have limited commercial, no, and we have a.
Not L C D. Not in the L C D, okay.
Well, we have it up there. I mean, there's a kennel, right?
Right.
The raising and keeping of dogs, so.
Yeah, it should be, it should be BOH, not no. Right, BOH, and then up above the note will be say BOH indicates C Board of Health regulations. Okay.
Um, Sarah?
Yes.
I, I, I think, I, I know that they regulate, um, poultry and things, but I don't know if they regulate livestock. I, I just wonder if you're making a.
So, if they're not.
I'm sorry?
They do.
They do. Okay, we don't need to all regulate the same thing. Okay.
But it, but it, while they regulate them, you, I think it's, there's a still reason to, to say that it's allowed, but whatever.
Yeah. Okay, I think we now do that. Um, okay, and then, um, other, two other notes I had, that, do we need to take a vote on that one? I think we should.
That was Christina's motion, and I think, did you make that motion on the BOH things?
I think Sarah brought it up.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to change it to Board of Health. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Ron is second. Um, any other discussion? All in favor? I, six, uh, six voting yes. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, and my, my only concern with that is that, so currently we have no for G and the L C D, even though there is a.
So, we're gonna say.
Doggy dick here in the L C D, but I would assume the Board of Health in the general district is no, you can't have cows and stuff like that, so that whatever.
Right, okay, then the other, um, so we're gonna also renumber that. The other question that I had, just to check, is that in the L C D, in that same page. Community uses, charitable number six, we have no in the limited commercial district. We, it's a charitable or philanthropic use hospital nursing care facilities, that should be a P B, correct?
In community commercial? No, it's not allowed now. We're just changing what's here, right?
Yeah, it's not allowed now.
It's not allowed now. Okay, so keep no.
Where? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
No.
Um.
E six.
Community facilities.
Philanthropic use.
Use hospital nursing care facilities and sanitarium. Uh, we have no, okay, and then in the senior housing, we actually, the, that motion has to change that. Okay, got it, just making sure. Um, and a cemetery is not allowed in the L C D. And public utilities or commu, public communications building.
Not allowed.
Not allowed, so those are correct? Okay, great.
Well, I think, just one thing to go back on, municipal uses including parks, playgrounds, senior center, this is all defined here.
Okay.
Um, sewage lift stations, related parking facilities. I, I think we were silent, we just said yes across the board.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I think that related back to, like.
I think I raised concerns and he said, at least Bobrowski said that we can't restrict.
No, I think he said we could, and we were at the time saying, hey, it's, it's fine, it's fine. I'm just concerned that we say yes and we give our review rights away.
Oh, that, yeah, so, um, well, but you, municipal uses kind of supersede the planning board, right?
Yeah, I think they would.
But I remember the exact conversation.
We should still do a site plan review or whatever.
Was the salt storage. I mean, I think that was the example, do you want a salt pile on the corner of your property, anywhere and everywhere without any kind of. Say, and we just kind of skipped over that one quickly and people were like, yep, 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 fine. So, I'm just a little concerned about that one personally. This one was not transposing, this one we discussed and put that in there because it was silent.
It predates me, so I, I don't have knowledge about the conversation.
Um, I agree with the concern and I also agree with, um. How it impacts what we've just been discussing, protecting our water supply, et cetera, et cetera, so we will have town land near water.
But all wa, but those other rules would, if the use is in, is one of the regulated, um, you know, uh. If it adds, if it has drainage or, um, is in the water supply district, um, or involved. If it triggered one of those uses, it would require a special permit.
I hope. Says yes right now. I know, we, so it should almost be yes slash planning board or yes slash.
Which, which one?
Planning board. If we're doing a site plan review, we're just saying yes, so if it needed something, it should say it.
Triggered by a certain size and requiring special permit review? Maybe there's a size threshold? I do remember some conversation with Bobrowski about it.
What do we have now? I think we're, again, we were trying to mirror that thing, the. My understanding, my co- action, it was silent.
Sarah?
Yes.
So, by saying it's allowed does not, as you're, as you noted, does not take away any of the regulations that go with that. So, just like the plant, just like the playing field that's being considered on Pine Street. Because it has over ten parking spaces, it goes before the planning board for special permit. So, this table is not meant to, to capture everything that it may need under every circumstances. This table is just saying it's allowed either by right or special permit, um, and then the rest.
Other things trigger.
Regulations stand for itself, so.
Where are these regulations now? Cause we've replaced so much with the table, where is that regulation?
They're in section six.
Yeah.
To the parking.
Parking, section five would be parking. So, just to, to clarify that the, um, current use regulations that we have in single residential districts. Our municipal parks, playgrounds, and other municipal recreation facilities, et cetera, the exact same wording. The general district allows municipal and utility uses, um, and I suspect if I go further, municipal uses are allowed in the L C D. So, I think the intent of mirroring our existing uses is achieved now, um, maybe.
When we said yes, by right.
Correct, so that's.
But it's kind of not by right, but.
If it's required a special permit, by right doesn't really indicate.
But it would require a special permit under a different provision.
Right, if there's, if there's, if it's in the water resource district, if it's stormwater, if it's earth removal.
I see the connection, yeah.
He was saying at that point that yes, our language is not specific enough, right? He's like, do you really want a salt pile on your corner? Like, I mean. And that was the example, right? Something like that?
Something like that.
I mean, he was the one who brought concern up about it.
So, it's mirroring our current bylaw. I mean, the other thing is we could just put yes, planning board if we wanted to. I mean, I feel like municipal uses are gonna get a lot of scrutiny.
Yeah.
Elsewhere in town.
Exactly, I don't think they're gonna put a salt pile in anyone's backyard.
Um. Does somebody wanna make a motion or do we want to leave it as is?
I just wanted to bring it up before.
Okay, hearing no motions, I'm gonna move along. Um, the other one, um. That, uh, had come up.
We have the bullet B.
Uh, delete, um, note three. Um, delete B, uh, delete bullet, it's on page nineteen. Um, delete B, uh, delete bullet, it's on page nineteen, uh, the E is redundant with B. So we can just get.
No, it isn't. A resulting structure in harmony is not the same as appropriate in terms of bulk, shape, location of the lot in relation to building properties.
That was just input I got from somebody who read, and I think.
Yeah, it, it is, it says within the general, immediate and general area, so.
Very subjective sentence.
Trying to simplify that.
Define harmony.
So you're saying, shouldn't we be deleting E then, which has.
Yeah, E, delete E.
E.
Yeah, sorry, I thought you were saying delete B.
No, delete E.
Very hard.
E is within B.
E is within B, I, I agree, I thought we were deleting B, sorry.
Any objections to deleting E?
Um. Is appropriate the same as in harmony with?
I don't think so, I don't know. I just feel like deleting something right now, after we've looked at this and it's been like this for years.
I don't have a strong feeling it's one we're gonna do. Well, I think just the, um, appropriate in terms of all those things that qualify it, is an easier thing to.
To measure.
To measure and.
E is subjective.
Than saying something is in harmony, which is pretty difficult to.
Up to the beholder.
Right, yeah. In harmony, um.
So. I think B is actually quite good.
B is stronger, that's why I was objecting to deleting B, when I was mistaken.
Alright, so.
I mean.
I'll take a motion to delete.
We can say appropriate and in harmony, if that makes people feel better than deleting B.
I like the word harmony.
Appropriate and in harmony and appropriate.
This is Sarah Melish, in harmony is part of the state code.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay.
Well, what?
Let's just leave it then.
Thank you. Leave it.
Alright, let's, let's just.
I mean, unless there are major typos, we've, like, Sid talked about this for a long time.
Yep, okay, delete that, no, so we're not, uh, Sue and Gail, there was no motion on deleting E. Okay, um. Note, um, um. And swimming pools, um, so in talking with Sarah Melish, she suggested on section four point three point three, that one of the, that an additional, um, uh, requirement for a swimming pool permit would be written confirmation that all abutters to the property have seen the proposed plan and have waived the special permit review. Um, because her feeling is that a lot of the, the, um, uh, concerns that happen with the swimming pools are simply that the abutters haven't seen the plans, and they want to see them and have the opportunity to have input. And so if they, but oftentimes, they come and they have, actually, they say, well, they don't have a problem with us. So, um, she thought, well, we could save a lot of time by asking that they be given the opportunity to waive the special permit, and if they're not willing to do that, then it does go to the Z B A.
Do you have a, do you have a definition of the abutters, how, how many there are, how far it expands?
We've talked about that. We said direct abutters was what we, we talked about with her, we didn't talk about that.
Can we write the word, can we write the word direct then?
We direct. So my other question on that is, so the abutters list is gonna have Mr. and Mrs. or whoever it's on there, do we want every person that's on the list? I mean, if people are in the middle of a nasty contentious divorce, I mean, I think every person on that list has got to sign this, you just can't have one person.
So, so this raises another problem too, which is what if somebody's in Florida for the summer?
They'll get their mail forwarded.
They're. That's it. May I make a comment? I think if you're asking for a waiver, then someone could feel pressure to sign that they, that's different from being invited to a public hearing, to speak in front of a board, and I don't think that we ought to start making any sort of partial exceptions, either it gets a special permit hearing, or it doesn't. But asking for people to sign away their, their permission via waiver, I think is problematic. As an abutter, you might feel some pressure, or some, some reason why you might say something differently.
So what we're saying now is you can do it by right, is what the proposal is.
Is what the proposal is, which is different than, which is a change from the current.
Current is special permit, and you have appeal, you have an appeal process.
Right.
So this is Sarah Melish, my suggestion was not that you ask them to waive their right to a special permit, but they've seen the, the plans and they agree to the project. That's a different standard.
Okay, so let's check, let's take out waive special permit.
So Sarah, what's your thoughts on who has to say? One person?
The, only the, only the direct abutters, not everyone on the abutters list.
So if it's Mr. and Mrs. or Mrs. and Mrs., whoever it is, both people need to sign?
Right.
Okay.
So, you know, if they're a direct abutter, they see the darn pool. We've had only one pool before us where anyone raised a question, and it happened to be a butter, and they hadn't shown the plans in advance. And so it came before it was consented to the Z B A, but once they understood what they were doing, they were able to modify the plans to, to meet the needs of the abutter. And that's what we're trying to do, say, go to your abutters first, don't ask the Z B A to, to mediate your disputes. And if you have a dispute, then you come before us.
So Sarah, what? I'm just thinking, worst case scenario, so what if someone illegally signed for someone? What would that person's recourse be then?
It would have to be an appeal of the building.
Okay, I'm just thinking aloud, sorry.
Appeal, appeal of an administrative decision, which we hate, but that's what it would be.
Okay, so, I, I wanna change the language a little bit, Sarah, see if this sounds right. Written confirmation that all direct abutters to the property have seen the proposed plan and do not object to the project.
Yep, that's fine.
So can somebody just walk me through the process, who, who pulls the abutter list and who sends it?
It would be part of the application for the building permit, that the building department would have some type of form, that the applicant would get all of the abutters to sign and submit it as part of the building permit.
But does that form have direct versus a but, versus non-direct?
Well, we'd have to put it that, make it that way.
Well, the new form.
It's a new form.
Oh, new form, okay.
Yeah, doesn't exist today, but I, I, I think that would alleviate the concerns of people in town who don't want things by right. And we receive an application for swimming pool about once a month.
Okay.
It's pretty obvious.
Yeah, direct abutters are pretty obvious.
Everyone right who's enjoying the property or across the street.
You can go on Patriot Properties and find your direct abutters.
But not diagonal, not like bingo.
Okay, um, so Chris has made a motion, I think, right?
Yes.
To add G under section four point three point three, that, uh, to say, um.
Written confirmation that all direct abutters to the property have seen the proposed plan and do not object to the project.
Okay, um, uh, I'll second, oh, I'll second that, Sarah's seconding that, uh, Mary has a comment, yes?
So what if, okay, what's, just as an example, what if there's five abutters and four sign and one does not?
Then it goes to special permit.
To the Z B A.
Yeah.
Okay.
Local.
Does it say that in here?
I'm just looking to see.
Is it on anything else where we have this sort of trigger for things to go to the special permit? I just worry about precedent.
I don't agree, it'd be a good precedent.
I'd just like to know that the building inspector and the building department, or wherever all these other things fall, are, you know, primed and ready to go if these things pass, that all of this scaffolding is in place, that, you know, there's a new form, there's a, you know, I don't know that, it's not our purview, but who's does, who's getting this new form? Who's passing all this stuff off to the building inspector and his department, do we have the staff for it, do we have the time?
Well, you figure right now, if I, if, most people probably go to the building inspector to buy, to say, what do I need to do to be, to do a spill, a swimming pool? Is my guess, I, my guess is that they start there, and he says, you gotta have a special permit, you have to go through, to the Z B A. So, they're already, my assumption, I may be wrong, but unless they've done it before, or they've got a contractor who's doing it, they're, that they probably start with the building inspector anyway to talk about their pool. And then, so now, he's gonna say, fill out this form that has these A through G, and come back with your plan, and I'll, um, assess it, evaluate it.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just more, you know, it's the devils in the details, who's designing the form and who's giving it to the building inspector, right?
I think that maybe Sue and Bill, and the building inspector would put it together, and.
I think we're introducing gray area, I think something's either by right, or it's a special permit, and you just go through the process, and it doesn't have to be cumbersome. But this thing that's like kind of a special permit.
Goes to a special permit, it's cumbersome, by definition.
Well, then why, then what's the concern about having a swimming, I mean, if there's a concern about having swimming pools by right, and we're trying to address that, should they be by special permit, I don't know, I mean, it just feels like we're carving this up to. Why is a special permit for something like this cumbersome?
Sarah? Melish?
Sarah Melish, why is a special permit for swimming pools cumbersome?
Takes up that time.
Yeah, I think it takes up a lot of time.
And, and have you ever gotten a special permit? They're not easy to get, I've gotten one, several too, and they're, you know, they take months, they cost money, gotta notify all the abutters, go to a hearing, sometimes you have to hire a lawyer.
Uh, I guess in the case of the swimming pools, the Z B A, right, wrong, or indifferent, has not denied any. Her, her advice is that we always pass them, provided they meet the other requirements, and that the only issue we ever have is that the abutters haven't seen the plan.
I just wanna voice the concern, and, and I'm fine with all that, my only concern is that we're taking it away from the Z B A, cause it's cumbersome, and we're putting this all on the building inspector who works ten hours a week, so, you know, we're just kind of shifting the, the workload, and that may sound good, but, uh, you know, I, I just don't know that we have the.
All we're saying is if they don't meet all the requirements of the by right, it automatically goes to a special.
Right.
And the building inspector can have a checkoff sheet of understanding those conditions for the by right. As part of the permit, and if they don't meet it, it comes to Z B A.
So it.
He does that all the time.
So this is just a condition on.
Sort of what he already does, except he's, he, it already, they all go there. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion on the motion? Um, all in.
Production motion?
Uh, the.
Chris, you wanna rip?
Yes, the motion is to add G, written confirmation that all direct abutters to the property have seen the proposed plan and do not object to the project.
That's written confirmation, have we seen their signatures?
I think the form, there's gonna have to be a form.
Form that has the signatures on it, okay.
Okay, um, any other?
Sarah?
Uh, yes, is that you, Sue?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just, I, I really think that you are getting into some gray, some gray area here, so I would just recommend that you pass this particular, um, one by the town attorney.
They're all gonna go there.
They're all gonna go to the town attorney, that's what we're trying to get through tonight, so good advice.
Alright, I'm glad you did this one.
Okay, thank you, good, good, that'll be a good check. Sarah, have you seen this anywhere else, Sarah Melish?
Um, what we're hearing is that a majority of towns do not require a special permit for a swimming pool.
Okay, great, um, any other?
And so, what we're trying to do is to kind of give the option that it can go to a special permit if, if a butter, direct abutters have an issue. So we don't, that we're not accused of taking away that right.
Okay, um, I, uh, all in favor of Chris's motion? Raise your hand. All opposed, okay, uh, passes five to one. Great, thank you, um, okay. So we are now done with what is Article One, with those changes which are quite modest, so I think, um, we will, um, we will make the changes, in track changes, uh, and put them on this website, on, on our, we will put, I will show, I will direct you to where they are. But with, it's, with track changes, we will accept them to send them to town council, but we will leave the track changes version, so we can all see it, okay?
Can we get this out this week?
Yes, we can get this out this week, to this one. And I think we can get adult entertainment out and a couple of the other ones, so let's see, um, so, Article number two, which is. Article number two is the gen, motions to change the general bylaws, let's skip over that for a minute. And let's go to, um, what is, it used to be called Article Number Five, it's now Article Three, which is, no, sorry. Article Five, which is now, uh, was Article Seven, it's now Article Five, and it's to amend section twelve. Okay? Section, uh, so, motion for, um, to, um. Oh, my battery's running out, what's going on?
It turned on.
Oh. There we go. Um, so, uh, everybody know where we are, section twelve administration, so we are moving, uh, deleting section seven and adding a new section twelve administration. And these are in this order, we can talk about this some other time, but I wanted to make sure that if we had any of these fail, that the others would stand alone, and that's why the order is, and maybe somebody, we can think through that again some other time, but that's why they're not, that's why they're in this little bit bizarre order. So, um, section, uh, twelve, um, has a number of proposed motions here, and they mostly are to add climate resilience and adapt, adaptation in a number of places. So the first one is in section twelve point five point two.
You're not doing this like more than the.
We already did that last time.
Oh, okay.
We agree, all agreed to that last time. Section, uh, twelve point five point two, to add eight.
Well, to replace eight.
To replace eight and insert climate resilience and adaptation in advance of the current eight, and renumber eight to, to nine.
So you wanna get rid of eight?
No, no.
No, no.
We're renumbering eight to nine.
Just stick it in the different series.
So may I ask a overarching question then? I obviously know what climate resiliency and adaptation is, how does this specifically translate when reviewing special permits? We don't have climate resiliency and adaptation guidelines.
Well, so I think, um, I would say two things, one is, we could put climate resilience adaptation guidelines on our future list of things to work on, and be specific. But there is also, um, some common sense things, which is the flood maps that are readily available from FEMA that show, um, the new hundred year storm, and so, for example, if you were going to, uh, increase, um, impervious surface in areas where there was a hundred year storm, I think you could say you were increasing the runoff and thus potentially increasing the effect of that hundred year storm, um, or even a five hundred year storm, or the seven, the twenty seventy flood, um, high tide, or any of those things. I mean, there's a fairly big body of literature on, on this, so I think it's, um.
But I don't know what teeth it has right now, if we don't have anything.
So I guess the question is, why would we leave it out, even if it's somewhat subjective, because it's a very important issue for our, for our town.
And I agree a thousand percent, but it is very subjective, so. Can I respond?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it is, um, doesn't need to be subjective, there are best practices around, um, and, and there is some overlap, you know, stormwater management, but flood control, amount of.
From where we are.
Uh, the reduction of, of water runoff from the site, um, so there are flood issues, there's heat issues, and how much, um,
And how much, um, not just impervious cover, but you know, how much vegetation? Where's the vegetation? Is it on the places where, um, we want pedestrian traffic to be? Um, so it's thinking about, uh, kind of public accommodations for, uh, resiliency. Making comfortable and safe environments. And then also thinking about, um, you know, depending on where you are. Might be sea level rise, might be flooding, it might be, um, stormwater runoff. Uh, some of those issues as well. So I think you can make that broad statement and look for the best practices and demand them in site plan review. And then we can follow along with specific, site-specific, you know, kind of.
I, I mean, I would. Saying we need the best practices somewhere that somebody can refer to them and say, okay, this is what I will be up against.
Yeah, the best practices are industry best practices.
But then we have to note that. I'm just saying, like, I, you know. I'm not arguing the point that we shouldn't have it and it's necessary. I just don't, I mean, these are just now thrown in there and we have nothing.
Well, I think I didn't, um, I, I put it in there in a general way, but there was another clause in a different section, I think, where I get into best practices and a little. So we did modify, um, Section Six last time to add resilience principles and best practices to protect, protect human environmental health. And, um, resilience practices, we, we added it a couple of places. I mean, I agree with Laura, I agree with both of you that, you know, sometimes these subjective things are a little bit challenging, but it's a good place to start. And let me give you one example. Um, if we had site plan review, I'm working on a project right now where the sea level rise is predicted to be at eighteen feet. And the architect came in with the first floor level at seventeen feet. And, and we're the owner. We said, no, raise it to eighteen feet. I mean, it's just sort of a common sense thing, right? You have, it's a, it's a sea level community. And the architect just came in what looked good. And we said, no, you have to raise this. I mean, it's a different process, we're the owner, but, but, um. And we may develop certain. Right, certain. Certain thresholds. Right. Such as, you know, if sea level rise is projected eighteen feet, then you need nineteen or twenty. You need some sort of, sort of on a free board, right? So you can set those conditions in. Yeah, I mean, the architect said we're just gonna wet dry, wet flood proof, but it's ridiculous. But anyway, but it's an example of like a common sense thing. If, if you know, if this is a resilient, a hurricane prone area. You have the models that show this fifty year building. Why wouldn't you? Kind of thing. And, and, and everybody kind of agreed. It's like, it's a trigger to set, to begin the conversation. I don't think it's, um. We can expand it if it helps to say, as we did in the other clause, to say hu, to protect human and environmental health. You know, if that, if you feel like that's doing anything for you. But I think it's similar to impacts on the natural environment. You have to get down to the specifics when you're reviewing a plan about how you're gonna mitigate or protect against the impacts on the natural environment. So I don't think it's a subjective thing. I think it's just a general purpose statement.
I mean, I could look at those two differently though, impacts on the natural environment. You know, you know what's gonna impact that, clear cutting, um, you know, too much impervious, whatever. But climate resiliency and adaptation, I gue, I mean, again, obviously I know what it is. I don't necessarily know yet how it equates to what we would do in a special permit.
I think it's putting it in our jurisdiction.
I think what it's saying is that it needs to be considered while you're doing the review. We may not agree as to what the, whether or not it complies, but it needs to be considered.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just putting on the applicant hat, so I'm saying, you know, I, if I, I wouldn't know what it means.
So if someone wanted to develop housing in the town hall lot, and we all thought that was a good idea, and they came in with housing. And they had, the elevation of the first floor was set at the grade of the park lot. Right. And we know that that's gonna flood, so we would say, that's not gonna work. If you wanna develop, but with housing, assuming we all agree that's a good use for that space. Then we would say, your housing, your flood level needs to be at, you know, harbor plus ten, or whatever we set it at. And so I think by making that broad statement, we can get to what the specifics are for any particular site. It's also, and we can envi, we can require the environmental, um, impact reports and the hydrologic studies and all that that will demonstrate that to us. But to make a general statement that we expect you to, um, consider climate resiliency and be responsive to what it's gonna take to protect human and environmental health. I think that's the sort of purpose statement we're trying to make here. And I agree that there's work to be done. I think it's work that we, you know, we're hoping we can get to with more clarity, so. Um, okay, any other conversations? I, I'll make a motion, or Laura has made a motion, I guess I'm gonna say, because she, that was your suggestion. To add number eight and renumber number nine, to add eight climate resilience and adaptation to Twelve Point Five Point Two criteria.
So I think the number one, do we change that to six point three?
There are you.
Same section. Standard set fourth. I think you need six point three.
Right.
Six point two is signs.
We're not on that one yet.
We're on five.
We're on, um, we're on motion, the, the first one to add, to add in number eight. Climate resilience and adaptation in line, right, line one oh five on page three.
Yeah, that's where I am.
Yep.
You're just skipping to something else.
I think you skipped to the next one.
She's just doing a rough, so, yeah. Okay, I just need to bring that up.
You're about to come to that next one. So, um, any other discussion?
On Twelve Five Two, no?
Yep. And we're gonna add it.
So in Twelve Five Two, number one needs to be changed.
Oh, yes, thank you, sorry. What's number one? Number one is, we said, that's a typo. Twelve point.
Just saying, while we're in this section, let's do, let's do it.
And then the paragraph above it also mentions six.
No, it is, it is, six point two is correct. Those are the, so six, so Section Twelve is the administrative things. Six point two are the special permit script, uh, performance requirements. So I believe that standards set fourth and six point two is correct.
Six point two assigns, six point two assigns.
Oh, well, then, no, it's not spread.
It's six point three, okay.
So I thought you were saying it's twelve point, six point three. Thank you for persevering there. Good. Uh, Sue, can we do a search on the entire thing on that question? Cause I, six point, make sure we didn't, uh, do, just do a search or replace for six point two. I'm looking at it again on page five, performance standards of six point three. In this section, we need to search for six point two.
Yes.
And make sure that we have the right sections.
Yeah, so just another search.
Yeah.
Cause, um, sometimes we use special permit granting authority lowercase. Sometimes it's SPGA uppercase, sometimes it's special granting authority uppercase. It's just kinda all over the board.
Yep. So I'm gonna add that in with Board of Selectmen, to Select Board, Inspector Buildings, Building Inspector. He, to he, she, and SPGA, let's just standardize that. And we're gonna search for six point three, six point two, make sure we search.
So what should it be, I think?
So Sarah, while you're, while you're, while you're mentioning that.
Yep.
The building inspector's actual title is Inspector of Buildings. We went through this, um, when we first began.
Okay, so, that maybe we just make sure that it's properly done throughout. Um, on that swimming pool one, let's make sure we've got that correct. Okay.
Did we, we, we only didn't find, we would, are we changing it to special permit granting authority caps? That's what we're.
Well, it may be the context that it's used in. Sometimes if you're talking about just the special permit granting authority shell. It may not be, but I don't, it doesn't, however you all want it to be.
It's in the table, I think.
They should be all in caps.
But SPGA. First, first.
That's what I'm changing.
Yep, yep, okay, that's fine, yep. Okay, back to the motion, um, that Laura has made to add climate resilience and adaptation. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, six to nothing. Great, thank you, Laura. Um, the next one is, um, six, twelve point, uh, six point two says any vegetation? Um, all sorts. So the applicability, any site development, number two. Any site development which involves cutting or removing vegetation shall be permitted only on. So that seems kind of, if you're gonna just cut down a bush.
Do you have it?
So the question is, any site development which involves cutting or removing of any amount, what? There's gotta be some trigger, right?
Ah, cutting or removal of vegetation. I think we already have a trigger, no? That's why we're here.
Cutting or removal of, we can say mature vegetation, or we can say trees. So with.
I mean.
Taller than six feet?
I mean, how, what about the C Street site?
I think that removal of vegetation may also be getting into, um, you know, if you have slopes and you're.
Yeah, the topography changes.
Topography and, um.
Vegetation could be weeds.
We could say woody vegetation, if you wanna be technical about it. That means not weeds, not herbaceous, not grass.
But any site development? That's like everybody's goes and cuts down.
Oh, jeez, and that's.
Did we lose the audience?
We put them to sleep.
Um, well.
Oh, nine thirty, the meeting ends, uh, on, uh, on the.
That's wishful thinking.
On what she, I think, what she, um.
I'm not on the meeting.
Uh-oh, maybe, I, are you still, is anyone still there?
Let me see, we gotta sign?
I don't think so. Is the gentleman out there still?
Yeah, I'm here.
It shuts, it, does it shut down if you only reserve the roof till nine thirty?
I have no idea. There, um.
That's what it was reserved till.
Uh-oh, that's ridiculous.
I don't know if that makes a difference.
Oy, they should know us better. We're just getting started at nine thirty.
I don't know, we go to midnight.
In Newbury, we used to be forty lot subdivisions.
The purpose of the site plan review is to ensure and design and layout of certain developments permitted. So this isn't to cut your grass.
No, that's certainly not the intent.
But I, I think certain.
They're still on.
Development.
They're still on?
No, I'm in it, it's, no one's in it. No, they are in it. I'm gonna.
How do we get it on screen?
I'm gonna just hold on.
Recording in progress.
Hi there.
Becky, have you had this happen to you before on?
Hi, um, we can, let me see if I can sign back in on the computer.
Never, never had that happen, that's odd.
Well, the, the room is reserved till nine thirty.
Do you wanna sign in or, um, do you have any idea what to do?
Um, you're gonna have to rehost the room.
What does that mean? Can you just join the meeting?
No, no, someone rehosted it.
You could touch it, Sarah, I think, just touch it.
Okay, do you have the meeting ID?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the, the meeting agenda.
Right here.
I've got the meeting agenda. Yeah, you ready for the number?
And someone else is, it can't be hosted on that lap, so.
She's got it on her laptop.
So she's hosting it right now? Okay, then that's fine.
Everybody's still here.
Good, yes.
Eight, one, one.
There?
Yeah. I wonder why I got kicked out? Eight, one, one.
I think it shuts down at nine thirty.
Five, eight, two, two.
Reserved till midnight.
Thank you. Two, one, no, you need another two, okay, sorry, got it, um, two, one, eight, nine. Yeah, uh, five, eight, two, two. You need another two, just a minute. Back up. Back up, erase eight, nine. Erase number one. Five, eight, two, two, okay, space, two, one, eight, nine. Okay, and then passcode, one, three, seven. Six, two, nine. You're ready?
One?
One, three, seven, six, two, nine.
God, it's high security.
Yeah. Okay, you did it. Got it, say got it. And then join. Want to detect your microphone?
So you're okay?
The speaker or microphone? Maybe you're, because you're, maybe because you're on the computer here.
Recording in progress.
Whoa, okay, leave computer, no, we're gonna get a big, I go.
I'm gonna over here to take this one off. All right, take this one off.
I think you want that one, maybe, want this one out.
No, 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 not yet.
I need that one.
So the host has to mute themselves.
I'm, I'm muted.
I can't try now.
Okay. I think we're on. So can you just put, can you expand that thing?
Yeah, make it big.
There we go. There we go. Wow.
Wow.
Welcome back.
Amazing.
I know, zoning a little bit. Can you hear us, Sue?
Nope.
Yes.
Yes, alright. Okay. Okay.
Alright, um, section twelve point six point two. Any site development which involves cutting or removal of mature woody vegetation.
Okay.
Well, I think it's within a context of a site plan review, so it makes sense.
Yes, right, but it's just a, okay, so we'll add mature woody, is that okay? Well, it's better than nothing.
Yeah, it tells you what they intend to.
Okay, is there consensus?
What's the definition of mature?
Okay, woody.
Definitely not being.
Over fourteen, age fourteen.
Oh, gosh. Alright, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. So if there was somewhere and they just planted and then it sells, we're gonna say, okay, they're not mature yet. We just planted two hundred trees.
That's fine, we can say woody vegetation.
I just don't know if we need to limit ourselves. Like, if we're going through this, we just need to consider all green.
Okay, if people are fine with that, that's fine. I just feel like it should have something.
Why should we exclude green?
Where did it come up, Sarah? Where is it?
It's just the applicability, number two, any site.
You're going to. You need to consider all green.
It's the applicability of site plan review, review.
Well, the removal of vegetation, decor you put in the woody is about, um. Disturbing soils, creating erosion, creating runoff.
But that's the point of the site plan review.
Yeah, so if you wanted to just be vegetation, that also works. I think it'd be woody vegetation or it could be vegetation.
Okay, do we need to ma, make a modification or we can leave it as, let's let it go? Okay. No change on that one.
Okay.
I'm just responding to comments. Okay, on move, uh, to add number, a new number five in twelve point six point seven. These are decision criteria. After, and then, um, and then renumber five, six, and seven. So we're adding a resiliency and adaptation to and mitigation of the adverse effects of climate change, which is flooding, sea level rise, and heat island effect.
I think it should be heatex.
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 So, so that would be, you know, additional trees, the other things we talked about before. So Laura's making a motion for that and I'm seconding that. So we would renumber five, six, and seven and add this as number five. Any discussion? Um, all, all in favor?
Nine.
Six, nothing. Okay, thank you, um. Okay, so I think we did that one. Okay, on section six again.
Section six?
Our, uh, yes, oh, oh, sorry, no, 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 we already did that, finished twelve? Oh, we just finished twelve?
We did.
Yeah.
So I had something on page two of twelve.
Okay, great.
It's just a typo.
Yeah.
Twelve point four point two, three, I think it should be approval not required plans. Just a D, just add a D on, under, on.
Say that again, four point, oh, four point what?
Twelve point four point two, point two.
And if there's no four point, twelve point two.
Twelve point four point what?
Oh wait, we gotta renumber twelve. Twelve, uh, one, two, one. Sue, under, it's typo, under, under enforcement. There's a misnumbering. They should be sections twelve, two. You'll see it when you go back to it, penalties and nondiscriminate. Okay, so, um.
Well, I don't know, but I'm looking at twelve point four point two.
Powers?
Yes. So twelve point four point two, point three. I think you just wanna do approval not required.
Yes.
D.
Wow, okay, I, I, Sue, you get that, line seventy six? Wow, okay, I, I, Sue, you get that, line seventy-six of, uh, section twelve. I, I have it here, so I'll share it with you. Great, good catch. Any other question, any other issues on section twelve?
Move to town council.
Okay, any, excellent, okay, so we have I think gone through everything, except for the general bylaws section, which I'm gonna, um, I'm going to pass over for right now, because we have two other things before we, and that, that we really need to do tonight before we get back to, uh, the other sections.
Can I ask, just, you were gonna get a couple things from last meeting, um, the, um, what triggers a stormwater for the, from the building inspector, and then the non-conforming uses in other towns?
Yeah, I don't think we've done that yet, thanks. I'm gonna have to have another workshop, I think, to finalize this, but yes, you're right, but, but tonight, we do have to do, we have some time-sensitive things. One is the cricket draft article, which was in the communications folder, and the other was the postcard for the open house, which I think could wait a week, but, and then the other thing is the draft table, which, because, which resulted from the, um, working group. And then Sue and Chris, I did not do anything on it, did some just formatting on the, just-
Formatting and typos.
Formatting and typos, because we were trying to, here, pass these along.
Did it have substantive changes too?
Yes, it has, so this had significant substantive changes from the risks and opportunities.
Okay.
So one thing I did, uh, just to move as long as, I added a first line to each section, so, and, and what it is, is the subject of the change. Just to make it clear, what was the heck we were doing, because some of them, if somebody said we're adding something, it didn't make any sense unless you understood the context.
Yeah, yeah. And so this is structured as a walkthrough of the zoning, not a walkthrough of the articles. So it's a, it's an attempt to, to use our structure of our zoning.
Okay.
So, um, is this up somewhere, so people?
Not yet.
No. I don't think we need to get better, because, because I think the public's supposed to be able to fill a little bit, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't remember, actually.
So I haven't seen this draft, so are we gonna discuss it next time?
Um, I, we, I think we'd like to get it up on the website by next week, so maybe we can-
Can we look at it now, I'm kinda walking through the changes?
Can you put it up as a draft, at least this week?
I mean, we have something that's quite similar already up there, so it's not like-
I haven't seen it either, but I, I don't know, but it's-
I don't know, but it's- That's the difficult thing about, how do we see our thing?
Right.
I seem to have the rules up.
This will be into October, and then it will be coming too much at the public all at once.
Where is communications, I know there's a folder, I just can't find it right now.
Zoning town meeting.
Under zoning regulations.
I have a cricket article for tonight, but I can't-
And then I think probably November meeting.
Oh, alright, I'm, I'm no missing, so, there we go. Alright, let's, let's, the cricket article is time, is absolutely time-sensitive, so let's start with that one.
We got copies of that?
It's on, it's been on that communications section. Draft cricket article nine twenty, no.
I think that's it.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Yeah.
Is this the right one? No, that's not the right one.
So what about the master plan?
Yes.
It is the nine twenty.
Yep, okay, so, if I go to here.
I think as we have these meetings now in here, maybe we should have more handouts again.
That'll be helpful.
I think it helps.
I'm not the host.
Yeah, 'cause I used to be able to-
I'm not the host.
Who's the host?
Is it that computer?
Maybe touchscreen.
Down the bottom, participants, you have to go to me.
Click on Sarah.
That guy was gonna help us.
Whoever started the meeting is the host.
So Manchester by the sea two is the host.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it might be.
That's not the touch view.
Is it you?
It is not me, it might be Greg.
If you've joined a meeting, then you're not the host, so it's impossible to join a meeting with no host, so we do it-
Who started it?
Is it, so it's whoever started it.
The, the touchscreen can't be a host?
They can't be a host.
Okay, so I think we don't have a, I think our host is not present.
No, the host is present, Manchester by the sea two is the host.
Now, who is that?
So the host is that?
I think, I think that it's Greg.
Is Greg on here?
I believe he is.
Who's hiding behind that? Reveal yourself.
I'll try to text him.
Okay, so while we're doing that, um-
Do you have my phone, Steven? Do you have my phone?
Maybe it's Sarah Bellish.
Need aloud.
I am not the host.
Alright, just checking.
I'm on a different-
Suppose you could read it.
I can read it aloud, well, start. In two thousand seventeen, a group of volunteer citizens was formed to prepare a new and updated master plan for the town of Manchester. The plan is essentially a document that summarizes the aspirations of the community to serve as a guide for town government. It describes both positive attributes and concerns the community should consider and recommendations for addressing these concerns. It was adopted unanimously by the planning board in two thousand twenty, in the town on the town website. The introduction to the plan includes the following statement. This master plan is a result of lengthy community engagement process that included residents, town departments, and staff, boards and committees, business interests, community organizations, and subject matter experts. While there was a robust and enthusiastic participation, the engagement process itself revealed additional challenges in the process and communication, leading to the commitment for the town, master plan be a tool, a tool that changes how the town conducts business. Put a period there. The master's plan is not a perfect document, it certainly does not represent the views of all town resident, of the towns' residents. However, it does provide valuable data documenting many of the town's features, as well as some shortfalls. It raises specific problems that need to be addressed, um, which need to be addressed if the town is to continue to accommodate the needs and desires of people who live or work here. Some may question its accuracy and relevancy, it however, it is however, a guide that represents a wide range of perspectives and goals from many residents. The following are general goals outlined in the master plan. To preserve the unique character of Manchester by the Sea and protect our natural resources, to support more housing choices for varying income levels, and to allow community members to age in place, and to attract and retain diverse businesses in town. The plan itself is just a document, the key to its effectiveness is however, implementation, is how it is implemented. Some of the recommendations require executive actions that town government can take on its own. These include replacing and repairing infrastructure, including water and sewer lines, street and sidewalks, and improvements to public spaces and facilities. These actions require the town to obtain the funding, undertake the design work, and manage construction. Much has been completed, some is ongoing, more has to be done. Other recommendations encourage independent boards and committees to recognize the core principles of the master plan and consider the recommendations of the plan in their decision-making. A key piece to implementing many aspects of the plan is Manchester's zoning bylaw, and the master plan devotes much of its content discussing how a recodification, recodified set of zoning regulations would serve the town's best interests. The plan further includes a clear objective of creating the opportunity for increased tax revenue from commercial development and for greater diversity of housing options. To quote the language of the plan, because change is more difficult than maintaining the status quo, we first present two, a priority recommendation of change that support the master plan's primary goals. Increasing town revenue through planned development within a limited commercial district, and through incremental growth downtown, and supporting a diversity of housing options. This was the inspiration and the basis for the planning board's decision to proceed with updating and strengthening the old zoning bylaw. In addition to reorganizing and reformatting to make the bylaw easier, can you, you-
Not because.
Uh, easier to understand and administer, it meant revising the bylaw to allow opportunities for development in the LCD, and to present the town with options for allowing a broader range of housing types to accommodate Manchester's evolving needs. Modifying zoning regulations has required a long and sometimes contentious process. Most of the changes are recommended by legal, by a legal consultant with a reputation for assisting scores in municipalities to modernize their zoning. The initial stages of this process have been approved at recent town meetings. Last November, the basic structure and renumbering of sections were approved. Last spring, regulations for the development of an LCD were adjusted to allow for the potential construction of a facility by self signaling. The next phase of this modification of zoning is to consider at the special town meeting in November. These include improvements to the language of the current bylaw to clarify the rules and administrative processes. They also present three proposals to permit a greater diversity of housing options. The specific proposals include allowing senior housing by special permit, allowing for clustered houses on lots smaller than five acres, also by special permit, and removing barriers to the creation of in-law apartments or accessory dwelling units within existing single-family homes. Some have expressed concerns that these proposals allow for development by right, but that is not the case. With the exception of the provision of allowing by right up to twenty small accessory dwelling units that meet certain conditions, all of these new bylaws require that a special permit be granted by either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals.
Appeals.
The, yeah, get rid of the apostrophe, the planning board will be hosting a number of events in the weeks before its town meeting. These events will allow residents to ask questions and express their views on these changes. I'm not sure we're having many events.
Few events?
Okay.
Events?
Thank you, Chris, for drafting that, um, uh, I'll take a motion to approve this cricket article as written, then we can discuss it, um. Motion. Second.
Seconded, but I had a couple, two.
Okay, comments and discussion.
Can I say, just there, can I share this now?
Just in what you read, when the first mention was commercial development, I think you should say limited commercial development.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know how it feels about that.
Okay, I think that's a good suggestion. I still cannot, um-
And then at the end of the, the last sentence, I think we should be specific that we're hosting a workshop on this, what, the month of October.
Right.
In the cafeteria of Manchester High School is what I read, is that where it's happening?
I mean, we reserved it.
Yeah, okay, so, let me just-
We have not, we've not, I, I have not reserved it as it's not, land, you have not confirmed a date, is that correct? That you're doing that.
Yeah, well, I'd like, I think we need to confirm a date, because, you know, you got logistics.
Yeah.
And that the public's needing to give it.
Do you see commercial in here?
Commercial, Ctrl F, commercial. Text from, from, uh, so it's second, okay.
So whatever date we confirm, I'd like to put that at the end.
I agree. Okay. Um, are we gonna be able to confirm that before submission then?
We'll confirm it today, right now, no?
With the high school?
No, well, well, the date will be, and we can say venue to be announced, or something you could say.
Okay, yeah, okay, any other, um, comments on the article?
Community center, might-
We, this, let's, let's, Mary, go ahead.
So I would say in the first paragraph, um, 'cause it makes it seems like citizens wrote this, the MAPC wrote the master plan?
That's not true. It was on the master plan committee, MAPC didn't, was a consultant, but they absolutely didn't write it.
They didn't write the document? Oh, their name's on it.
Well, they helped, but they didn't, uh, Sue, did they, they didn't write it, did they?
They were not the, they were not the primary author, no.
I was on the committee.
Okay.
They were a consultant to it, but they, we actually kind of rejected their process most of the way through.
Okay, um, the, at the end of the second sentence, in the first paragraph, there's two periods, so after-
Yes, I've taken those out, thank you.
I would suggest, um, that in the, where it says the follow, following are the general goals outlined in the master plan, I would add relating to development, 'cause there was a lot more stuff in the master plan.
Yeah, I, that's a good suggestion.
That, um-
Land development.
Yeah, I was, I was-
For land use and land development.
Yeah. I would-
While we're right there, I had the little bit of an issue with the sentence before. It is however, a guide that represents a wide range of perspectives and goals from many residents. I would beg to differ, it wasn't many people that were involved.
We had surveys and lots of people.
Oh, not many people answered the surveys.
Uh, five hundred.
Five hundred.
Hundred, and we had three, um-
It was ten percent, nine percent, ten percent.
So it's a guide that represents a wide range of perspectives, why can't, can't we just say wide range is perspectives? And maybe, maybe leave out goals, and just say wide range of perspectives. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Then on the last page, I would recommend where the first paragraph saying in the LCD were adjusted to allow for the potential construction of a facility by self signaling. I mean, the whole process, we kept saying it wasn't for a certain-
Yeah, I agree with you.
Company, so we shouldn't say that.
Far with that, yeah.
Laboratory, laboratories.
Construction of-
Use change.
Laboratories, to allow-
What's the sentence?
Uh, it says the LCD were adjusted to allow for the potential construction of a facility by self signaling.
Right, yeah, right. Last spring, rep, so I'm changing it to, last spring, regulations for the development in the LCD were adjusted to allow for the potent, for the potential construction of laboratories and scientific uses.
Yeah.
Is that the only thing we allowed, I thought?
That's what, that was the changes.
It was adding to what was already there.
Okay.
Um, I have a problem with this in general, but the second to last paragraph, where we say the specific proposals include allowing senior housing by special permit, I think it has to be senior housing facilities, because people really think it's senior housing.
That's good.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay, great, um, any other discussion, Laura?
We were just, when marriage to land development, I just wanted to insert land use and development. The master plan talks about land use and development, I think it's not only about development.
No, but the, I, there was just three bullets here.
Can you read it again? I just, I don't have it in front of me.
So it says the following are the general goals outlined in the master plan, and so these three just have to do with, um-
Land use and development, I added that.
Land use and development.
Actually, those are quotes from the master plan.
But they were, to her point, there were a lot of other goals.
All those are, well, there were, but these was a-
Three, but these are the three related to land use and development.
And not just-
Yeah, 'cause I mean, they did head, also recommendations for how the government is-
Okay, great, uh, thank you, Chris, for doing this, and everybody for your good thoughts. I'm glad I can still know how to read aloud.
Well done.
Um, all in favor? Uh, I'll post? One abstention? Okay, five, and, five votes, four, and one abstention, thank you, um-
Got a date on that.
Yep, with, we're gonna insert the date of this, um, so the next topic we are going to talk about is the postcard, which, um, I don't know if people can call that up in the, uh-
I'll be sure, can you read it aloud again?
It's pretty common to see it.
So it's pretty, um, it's pretty small, it says, um, can you, uh, can you share this with? Um, it just says town of proposed zoning change, updates and changes on one side.
Okay.
Um, and on the other side, it says, how do I learn more about the proposed zoning changes? Uh, bitly, mit, the zoning is a, and the QR code, and, um, attend a community zoning open house on Wednesday, October twelfth at seven at the high school, obviously we have to confirm that location, and then there's the special town meeting date. At the high school, obviously we have to confirm that location, and then there's the special town meeting date.
Did it give a time?
Ah, should probably have a time, the town meeting time, yeah, good idea.
Well, it isn't, it'll be put in there once it's known, that's why it's not in there yet.
Okay, but we should make sure it's in there.
So the objection we had last time, this is, the idea here is this is just fact-based, you can go to the website. It should also probably say that you can get the, um, copies at the library and at town hall.
And where does that code direct them to?
Directs you to the-
The website.
It does, okay.
Somebody should check that, choose, check that QR code, I have my phone, my phone's dead.
Who created this?
Tiffany.
Tiffany did this.
So I guess my concern was if elderly people are giving this, are we doing this because of elderly that are not tech savvy?
So it should say library and, um, town hall for sure. Yeah, there we go.
Is that the right spot?
Was anyone outside from the town staff involved with this?
No, I think, the only thing is that this doesn't have a place, a, um, place for an, a, uh, post, uh, like, how is it get addressed? So it needs a, a place for the, for the post office, postal customer. And the, um, and the postage insignia. So I think that has, that actually has to go back, because, but if, if we're okay with the content.
I can't, mine doesn't take me to that.
I don't think it goes, I don't think it, I don't think it goes to postal addresses, just like you get a mailing in, you know, an advertisement. It doesn't have your particular mailing address, but I'll leave that to Tiffany.
It has to have the ball mail stamped. The last time I did it, which was ten years ago, it had it, so just double check that it can be actually mailed, the way-
Exactly.
So could someone confirm that no one from outside the town worked on this?
Did anybody from outside the town, this is just Tiffany?
I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't know what that question is about, it's just Tiffany provided it to us.
I think that question was that, um, the first, uh, postcard was done by, um, I think Erica Brown had helped with it, and I don't think she had anything to do with this.
No, no, not that I know of.
Not that you know of.
Well, unless Tiffany asked her.
What difference does it make?
Well, honestly?
It's just a postcard.
Uh, there's a couple of things that, I mean, have been put in the paper that, you know, some planning board members are the last person to know, so I, I would like to know who else has eyes on it.
Okay, I don't, I'm not aware that anybody else, I, I, this is the first, that, first time I'm looking at it, so.
I read about things in the meeting in the newspaper last week for the first time, so I'm just curious who else knows things about.
I have no idea.
Okay, um, does October twelfth- Does October twelfth-
I'm happy with the way it looks.
Does October twelfth at two, seven PM, calling it a community zoning open house work for people?
Yeah.
I think it's like, and then, and I think if you look at our work plan in the next meeting, we're gonna talk about how that's structured.
Do we have a meeting on October eleventh?
We're trying to move that, yes.
Yes, we do.
Which is the holiday, the tenth?
The tenth is, uh, is Columbus Day.
But you can't make the eleven, right, is that what you told me?
Well, it's iffy and, um, cause it's a long weekend, um, but we got a lot on that meeting schedule.
Yes, we do. So then the next question is, we had, um, so let's just close this out.
Is it the eleventh, this public meeting?
No, this is the twelfth.
I was just asking if there was a meeting the night before.
Yes, we, it is a long, we're gonna make a long week, in a short week. No question, but I think that, that kind of works with timing.
So this has to go out really quickly.
Yeah, so any objections to the, um, uh, postcard?
So you said it was like twelve hundred dollars or something? What budget does that come out of?
Sue, how does, how do we pay for this?
Um, I'll, I assume it'll probably come out of my budget.
I mean, we wanna make sure people know, so that was one of the things that we wanted, that selectmen wanted to make sure we did that, so I think that this is the response. Um, I would like to see us add the, um, make sure that we have to add the library and town hall copies. Can be reviewed at library and town hall. And, um, and any objections to moving this forward? All right, hearing none. Sue, can you run that by Ron or me at, in its final form? So that we can get those chances, thank you, okay.
So, so we, so we have the date, we just need the venue and the time.
Right.
And I don't know how many people to expect, but maybe a couple hundred?
No.
No.
Maybe fifty?
Maybe fifty.
Maybe ten?
Maybe ten, maybe-
Well, it depends how, how many are-
Did anybody do it at college?
Yeah. Okay, um, I'm gonna suggest that we have one more working session to try to wrap up the rest of these, um, next, uh, Monday, because Tuesday is, oh, is Yom Kippur, right? No, Rosh Hashanah.
I thought it was Rosh Hashanah today.
Oh, no, what is it? There's a holiday next Tuesday, what is it?
I don't-
I believe.
I don't know.
Otherwise, Tuesday's better, right?
I don't see a holiday.
Okay.
Yom Kippur. Yom Kippur is the fifth.
Yeah, it's the fourth, yeah, so that's why I said, um, that we meet on Monday, the fourth.
Is it a state holiday?
It is, I mean, I think in respect for people who, I, it's, it's up to you guys, I can do, I'm fine either way. But I think we need to have another working session and try to, try to finalize this table, everybody take a copy. Finalize the, talk about the open house and finalize any other changes, go back to the ADUs and the other, um, the, eight, and vote those.
I don't think, yeah, so we didn't do final votes for-
RCC, senior housing.
Senior housing, non-conforming, and the general bylaws.
Right, right. Uh, that's quite bad.
Now with the general bylaws, um-
Can we just fi, close out on when we're gonna meet? Um, Monday or Tuesday, which is better? Tuesday is better for people?
I don't have a-
That's what, that was the date on the work plan.
Tuesday, that's not a, um, huge holiday, or I think, if it's-
Okay, Tuesday is better for people?
True.
Okay, so, uh-
So next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, so we're-
We'll do the fourth instead of the third, correct?
Yep, I should, that should be fine. Okay.
I have the fifth as Yom Kippur.
Right.
So we're, oh, and the fifth.
Well, it begins, it begins on the fourth and ends on the fifth.
Oh, I see.
So does it conflict?
So what did we post? I'm sorry, I don't know that list.
Maybe send down.
So does this conflict with any other town meetings when we get this room?
No, I can't tell you.
I'm sorry, what was the date that was adjusted?
The Tuesday.
Tuesday, the-
Tuesday.
Did the select board change their Monday to Tuesday?
Any select board members on, um, Catherine?
I'll look at the calendar.
I believe we have a meeting on Monday.
Okay.
Correct. Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, not posted yet. Um, okay, so Tuesday, the fourth will be our next meeting at six thirty, work for people, in person, somewhere. Okay, and we are gonna talk through, main, our, come with, we're gonna have to just vote these things, we're not gonna get full agreement, probably. That's my predict, I, I would love it if we did, and then, um, did everybody get a copy of this?
The, the table?
The table?
Yes.
I would say if you have, um, yeah, okay, we'll try to get through that in ten minutes.
Just mark it up and bring-
Mark it up and bring it, but let's get that, so we can get that on the website, um.
Did you hear about the state law cases? Have we got a list of those?
No.
No, we have not, um, I, okay, you wanna talk about the general bylaws, do we wanna?
No, I didn't wanna talk about it, I just want, so, um, does the select board need to have a hearing if they, if these are moving to general bylaws?
They do not, that like, accord, we were told last time that they did not.
By town council?
By grid, I believe.
I would like town council.
Okay, well, we can check that, for sure. Sue, can we check that, please?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, any other comments on the general bylaws yet, right now, we will take them up, um. It's ten fifteen, I'm thinking we're exhausted.
Yeah, we're gonna-
Yeah, I think I'm gonna pass, if you wanna continue the public hearing.
Okay. So, yeah, we're gonna continue the public hearing, I'll take a motion to continue the public hearing portion for discussion of zoning bylaws to Tuesday, October fourth, at six thirty PM. Um, do I have a second?
So moved.
Um, so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, um, I'll, uh, this needs a roll call, I think. Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ron, Christine?
Yes.
Mary, okay, great, we are making progress. Um, anything else? Oh, yeah, go back to Ron.
Uh, I know, um, so, just to finish out the agenda, I think we'll pass over the parking study tonight. Late liaison reports, I just had, um, Chris only on the Z B A meeting that you went to, any comments on that, or?
Uh, no, I, well, Christine was there too.
I made a comment.
Okay, how'd it go?
So I was just concerned, um, one thing, and we could talk about it, it was my understanding as the, um, non-conforming uses, if you had a single ranch style home and a bit of it was in the setback, this new bylaw would allow you to put a second story on.
And the answer is no, it would not. Sarah Melish was right, if you're in the setback, that's not one of the conditions that allows you to go to the building inspector by right.
So, but the argument is, and I think this is the thing of the whole case, and that's why I keep asking you for it, to give us the backup. When you go up the second floor, you're not making the non-conforming any worse, if you add to-
Yes, you are, you're extending, you're extending an exterior wall in the setback.
You're extending it up.
But this was the whole argument in the beginning of the case, this was the example that was used the entire time that we've talked about this. So this is why I continue to ask for these legal cases, because my understanding is those cases say that that's going up the second story doesn't make it more-
Non-conforming.
Exactly, so this is why I just want-
If you're in the setback, you are, it makes it more non-conforming.
No, you're not, by adding the second floor and the non-conforming, it's just airspace, it doesn't make it, which my concern is, it does, because now you're peeking into someone's neighbor. So the understanding from the beginning has been that you don't, so-
I don't think that's the case about in the setback, I think if it's lot coverage.
Yeah, if you're-
If you're, uh, to, uh, too small a lot.
Or you don't have enough fronting, you're straight, that's why. But we, maybe we could just clarify that.
That's what I, I would just like some clarification, because this was the whole conversation that we've had from day one.
Yeah, cause Brozky kept saying it's not increasing the non-conforming.
Sarah, Sarah.
Sarah Melish, do you have a comment on this non-conforming?
Yeah, so the way the bylaws drafted is, the only thing you can do by right is if everything you're doing is conforming. So he, so if you try to do anything on a non-conforming portion of your structure, it needs a special permit. If you create a new non-conformity, it needs a variant. But if you're gonna do a change to the structure on another part, that is everything conforms with setbacks, that's the only thing that's by right. It's not an existing, it's not changing an existing non-conformity, it's not doing structure in existing non-conformity.
I don't think that's right, so as-
That's the way it's true.
Yes, it's absolutely right, Sarah.
But I think the single story, putting a second story, if-
So what you could do is, you could put a partial second story on the part that's not in the setback.
Give me the cases, give me the legal opinion, the work-
These aren't cases, this is what the zoning, proposed zoning bylaw says. That's what we're-
I, just when we send this, I would like, and I actually would like town council's opinion on this sooner than that, because this is not what we've discussed for the last two years. We've always used this example, if it is, why can't you, it's not making the non-conformity any worse to go up a second floor, it's already there, it's already non-conforming. So I would like an answer to this, before we actually-
I'm not sure what your question is, just so we-
If a two, if a single, if a ranch home, and a portion of it is in the setback, which makes it non-conforming, can they put a second story on by right, or would they trigger a special permit?
So I believe the answer is they could put a second floor on the part of it that is conforming.
I understand what you're saying, and I think we all have a little bit different variant, I would like town council's opinion before the next meeting, that's all I'm asking for. Because I think we've talked about different things, Sarah has one thing, I've understood this for two years, and this is basically why I oppose it. So I mean, I, I maybe I'm opposing it now for no reason, so I, just to clarify this, let's get town council.
Getting it, I do, I agree with you that sending this one to town council in its current form is, makes sense, I think we agreed that we were gonna do that last time.
So we're in agreement to send this to town council?
Section seven.
And I really would like that example answered.
Proposed section seven.
Sure, yeah.
Can you send an email with that exact example?
Can you write the wording, so?
Sure, that'd be great, okay, good.
All right, um, that's it on Z B A meeting, um-
Water resources.
Couple of sentences on, I was not at the water resource meeting.
Yeah, I was at the water resources meeting, um, there was a good discussion about, um, uh, per capita use. And they renewed Scott Horsley's contract, um, he reported on some, uh, testing that they had done a gravelly pond showing the interconnection where there are sandy soils between surface water and groundwater. And a lack of connection where there are clay soils, that was interesting. Um, and there was discussion about sending out, uh, a citizen survey that had been proposed before, which I had some concerns about, because it was, seemed like it was, uh, not about water, so I'm still trying to find, find that, it was-
Did they send it to you?
They didn't send it to me, but I just, and when I was looking for something else, I just found the, um, yeah, so I'm gonna respond to that. Anyway, that's it, it was an interesting meeting, it's, um, they're doing some good work, so.
Go back to non-conforming uses, I'm, would it be okay if I sent everybody this document? Which is with some examples of each situation, so that we can all s-
Did you just come up with it, is it new? Oh, we've seen it before.
Yeah, this is new, yeah. So I could, I could put it on SharePoint, I can email it to everybody.
Or you could pass it out right now.
Well, I don't, I only have one.
I know, but I know how to use the copy machine.
To, to that point, it's, I think the email that you sent about the RCC, we are crossing fine lines, it's your opinion, you distributed it. I think you might need to email it just separately, I mean-
I thought I put it on SharePoint, did I? Or maybe I didn't.
It's the same thing as blasting it.
But we're not making a decision, isn't that just keep, somebody giving?
You give opinions on how you see the movement.
Excuse me, Sarah?
No.
You can email, but you cannot have any deliberation, it's okay to send an email out, but you need deliberation.
Okay, so.
That's the opinion, is that-
I don't think you can send an opinion to the board, like, so one board member sending an opinion to all board members?
Correct, you're not deliberating, if you're sending a fact, you can do that.
It's not a fact, it's not a meeting, it's no, it's an opinion.
Oh, retract it then.
I'm just saying going forward, maybe just send it individually.
Okay, and then do you wanna make a, do you wanna distribute this for?
So what is this for, you're make, you wanna, when, recall the mode on, um-
On the RCC cluster.
On the RCC cluster.
Requiring it affordably.
So we're gonna be talk-
We're gonna talk about it next time.
We're gonna be talking about that next time, so why don't you bring that up?
Yeah.
And then bring it up for discussion for everyone to hear, and then we'll, we'll hold on. All right, I'm, uh, these two minutes, eight eight and nine twenty, are they in the packets?
Yeah, they've been in the packet.
Uh, nine twenty was just posted.
Did I?
No, we, uh, they, it wasn't.
No, we didn't, we were supposed to be-
So how about eight eight, any, uh, any comments on eight eight, has anyone read them?
Mary?
I read them last night.
How did I know?
Do I get extra points?
Yes.
Who's signing our minutes since Gary hasn't been here in months and months and months?
Good question.
We revert back to the previous person.
No, you're not.
That's the, uh, it was in the bylaw that we just, it goes back to you.
Nope. I won't take it.
That's a good question.
My comments are correspondence, it's Ms. Roberts, not Mr.
I don't know if Gail's on here.
Oh.
Looking for the-
She's not, I'm right here.
Oh, you are, okay, thank you.
I try, right here.
So, uh, Ms. Roberts, instead of Mr., I would add Ayavani on that list. Then it says, right below that, it says, under Windermere Park, it says, Ms. Foley indicated that she had several questions and was disappointed that Mr. Cunningham was not available to- and was disappointed that Mr. Cunningham was not available to answer his questions, so just answer questions. Not plural. Uh, page two, paragraph four, it says, um, second sentence inappropriate for a building to startle two lots. So to straddle. I think that's it.
Move to approve as amended, the, uh, September eighth, right?
August.
August, August day, sorry.
Any objections?
Was that, yes, I mean.
It's unanimous.
I knew we're not here.
I can't, I can't second it.
Five, five, nothing to approve.
Um, yeah, I think Laura seconded that.
I, I've read them, yes.
Okay, good.
So nine twenty will do next meeting, um, and we have officially moved our meeting from October tenth to October eleventh. Correct? We'll have three public hearings, it's already posted in the cricket, correct, uh, Gail?
Yeah. Yep, all three posted.
All three public hearings on the eleventh, so read up during your.
All three public hearings.
What does that mean, all three public hearings?
There's two that are basically the same on the Crocker Boatyard and Manchester Marine.
And then the field.
And then one is on the, from the town to add twenty spots to the bird dump.
Oh, my bike's out there.
Is the public invited to work? No, no, are they, are they?
No, the, uh, no, the ruling is applicants can come if we invite them, but the public participates on Zoom.
Okay.
In a butterscup? I'm just curious, I was just wondering what the rule, you have.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know the detail, but I can find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Did I give you, who made that rule?
Uh, I think it came from the town administrator, um, Sue, do you know the ruling on, uh, hybrid meetings? Where they think.
I think the, I think the basis of them are from the state law, but I, I'm not, I couldn't, I can't, don't, I'm not the, yeah, I'm not the one to ask.
Okay, we'll find out about attendees.
At least four board members must attend.
Excuse me?
At least four board members must be present.
At least four of us must be present.
Yeah. Four members must be present, I mean.
Oh, and the others could call in?
Yeah.
Let's say, let's keep coming.
Let's keep coming. We love.
Can you give Gary that memo?
We have, I have.
Ticket mushroom. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, definitely. Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Anyone against? We adjourned.
Wow.
Thank you all, ten thirty.